Good evening. I would like to call the Wareham School Committee meeting to order. It is Thursday, November 16th. This is being broadcast by WCTV. Audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. And would we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for a long-term custodian at mine at Forest, Ed Batterton, who passed away this morning. Thank you. We'll begin with public participation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the committee? All right, seeing no one, we will move on to good news. Dr. DeAndrea.
I have some good news, yes. So first of all, tomorrow is the boiler commissioning for the new boilers at the high school.
Scott approved that.
Yeah, it's approved that. And they've had heat, right? Nice and warm in the building, so there you go. So that's exciting news. I also would like to share, I know I have shared this with the committee, but I'd like to do it publicly. We did last week, we had a situation in the morning at the elementary school where a parent had a medical emergency and an extremely dangerous situation developed from that emergency. And thank you to the quick thinking and reaction of Sarah Russo. The students and staff remains safe, and we really avoided a potential disaster. So I wanted to say thank you. She's gonna, what she's gonna say, it's a team effort, and she's right. It was a team effort, but every team needs a leader, and she certainly took the lead on that and did a great job, so thank you.
Who wants to follow that up? April.
Well, last week, many of us on the school committee and Dr. DeAndrea got to attend the MASC/MASS joint conference, and I know I always come back super excited and energized from it. I know we're not doing any updates from it today, but I had, I always learn a lot, and I always find out from talking to other school committees in other districts when they hear about the stuff that we do in Wareham and the stuff that our educators do and our students do and the offerings that we have for the kids. There are so many, so many districts in the state that do not hold a candle to what we have, so it really, it really is a shame that, that we don't get, and you guys don't get more credit for how amazing this district is, and I hope that that will continue to change. But talking to other school committees and other superintendents across the state, it really is amazing to know how much we offer our kids, so thank you to everyone who's here for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff? Oh, go ahead, please.
It seems like it was so long ago, but I got to attend the pumpkin story walk at the elementary school. I guess it was a few weeks ago now, which is always so much fun. I'm always so impressed by the projects that the kids do. So I'm glad that I got to attend that, and I just got my personal invitation to the Young Adult Thanksgiving next week. I'm really, really excited about that. Thank you.
Jeff?
So I'm looking at my phone to make sure I get the names correct, but first I wanted to publicly thank Marissa Smith, Sam, for sending me four eighth graders, Scott's not gonna like this, but four eighth graders who are interested in the tennis team. That's not the big news, okay? By the way, the names are Julie Salem, Juliana Statkus, Lon Tran, and Malia O'Connor, okay? So what's the big news? Thanks to the boosters, they are getting some tennis lessons before the tennis season. That's not the big news. The big news is that I walked into Marion Indoor Tennis, where they were getting their tennis lesson, and there they were, and they had their phones on. And you're thinking, oh, gosh, social media, right? No. They had their Power School dashboards on their phones, and there wasn't a single grade lower than A. So, I'm sorry, there was one A minus, and I think it was Juliana who quickly said, oh, don't worry, I have a test today or tomorrow, and I'm sure I'll improve. So, thank you, Marissa, wherever you are, and thank you, high school, they're wonderful kids.
I've got a couple more for you.
As long as they don't have a B, that's, that's.
Wow. Can't go tanking Jeff's average.
You watched that TV, right?
Yeah, that's right.
We have now finished our recruiting part of the evening.
I wasn't recruiting, that was a thank you.
Public relations, it's all good, I get it. Any other good news? All right, we're gonna move on. We have a very weighty agenda tonight. Weighty doesn't have to mean long, but we'll see how that plays out. That's up to everyone in the room, all right?
No pressure.
So we will start with minutes. I said everybody.
No, I said Jeff.
And we all look at Jeff.
We'll start with minutes of the meeting. We have minutes from October 19th and November 7th that need to be approved. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Opposed? Five zero zero. We're off to a great start.
Trying to beat you, Brandon, on the second thing.
All right. Next up, we have the educational research request. We have two staff members who are doing some work, I believe, on their masters, or maybe CAGS even. So we have Colleen Cuneo and Andrea Erickson, who I'd like to come up to present. And we have had a chance to read the research proposals, and so I'll let you give maybe a quick overview of each, and then if we have some questions, we can ask of each candidate.
Oh, okay. I'm Andrea Erickson. I am taking a leadership in education course for a CAGS program, and I need to give three surveys to, two surveys to the teachers and one survey to the students about school culture and school climate.
Thank you. We'll start, we'll just do one at a time, if that's okay. So does anyone have any questions for Andrea regarding the surveys that she wants to give out? Jeff?
Not a question. I don't believe it says on the policy, but I could be wrong, because I haven't seen it in a week or so. But I would love if we approve it, which I intend to, that we get a copy of the results. I would love to see it and maybe even have them back to talk about their conclusions.
I have no problem with that. I think we can all agree to that.
Okay.
If you guys agree to that, that's fine with us. Okay, good, I like that.
Okay.
Any questions on that survey? So let's just go one at a time then, and this will be quick, if you're happy with this. So do I have a motion to accept the educational research request for Andrea Erickson's surveys?
Emoted.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, five zero zero. All right.
Thank you.
Next up, Colleen.
I'm Colleen Cuneo. I am in my master's program, so I'm starting to work on my capstone, and I am trying to research apathy in students and how home life demographics can affect that. So I was hoping to have Wareham participate, as well as New Bedford High, Mansfield High, and Southeastern Voc Tech. So, yeah, it's just a questionnaire for the students, and I have some for the staff as well.
And again, we had those questionnaires that we were able to look at, so I'll ask if any committee members have any questions? Jeffrey?
So, you can ignore what I'm about to say, because I'm not your advisor, but this was my reaction. I loved the topic, but I felt you're going into it with a preconceived notion about it. I mean, you literally say you think apathy is caused by, and you're trying to prove it, essentially with your, with your, I actually have a different theory. You may be right, I may be right. My biggest concern is that I'm not sure you're gonna find out whether I'm right or wrong, because my own theory is the apathy is the effect, but the cause is not necessarily demographics, although it may contribute to it. To me, the cause is frustration with the inability to learn, and that causes the apathy to appear when in fact it's the result of something, not the home life necessarily, but the result of the fact that they're frustrated by the, by the fact that they can't learn. So FYI, I plan to say yes, I'm fascinated by the results, but I'd like you to at least think about the fact that you shouldn't go into a study with a preconceived notion about what it's gonna show.
Right.
Brendan?
I just have one comment, looking at, and just something that I've noticed in Wareham being a problem with apathies. What about the media's influence? Because I know that a lot of times people read, you know, in the paper, and that might be if they don't have a student, they might have, the only thing that they see is an article they read in the paper, which is usually, you know, an MCAS-related thing, and they don't get the full scope of it. So sometimes, you know, really what they hear in the news about how bad schools are doing, I think that's one of the leading sources of apathy, so I don't know if you have that included in there or...
I was like, because I had it a much more broad, like, apathy in general, and I was told to narrow it down to a specific thing to research, so.
Oh, that's interesting.
And I found very little research on demographics and home life, and the research I did find was 12, 13 years old, so I figured it would be a nice update to see if there was a correlation.
Okay. So what you're really saying is you're, after this, you're gonna write a book?
Hopefully not, no. I'll illustrate it.
April or Joyce, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
So I have a motion then to approve Colleen's research project? So moved.
Seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained, five zero zero. Good luck on your research. You guys have a lot of work to do, it looks like. Good luck. All right, next up, we have the Director of Finance report. So this was the FY25 budget presentation. This is the shortened version from our workshop that we had recently, which is available on WCTV, and Dr. DeAndrea has said that he's more than willing to talk with anyone about any particular detailed questions they might have regarding this at a later date as well. But I know our initial one was about 76 slides, this one is down to 22.
Right.
So take it away.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
That we do the transfers before you do the presentation?
Sure. Let me grab my...
So the transfers are gonna be, which is fine, we can do that, but is business that we did not put on the agenda yet?
Oh, that's, that's okay.
So under 48 hours.
It's all right, we'll just move that up right now. Unforeseen business within 48 hours. So we can do that first. We have those that Kristen just handed out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. I have some, two transfer requests for this evening that have come up that we need to take care of. So the first one, I did send it out via email a little bit earlier this evening, but I put a hard copy at your desk, too. So the first one is a budget transfer request from the Student Services Department in the amount of $10,104, and that's to cover the costs of our special education student information system for the third and fourth quarters of the year and the student services portion of DocuSign. So it's a student services technology-related budget line. And what we've done is we've updated the FY25 budget, we increased it accordingly, so hopefully we will, we will not have this budget transfer for next year. So that's the first one. The second one is for transportation, for out-of-district transportation. It is for out-of-district special education transportation, foster student transportation, and McKinny-Vento, which is homeless student transportation. I'm requesting a transfer out of driver salaries, out of our, our own employee driver salaries in the amount of $103,000. And this will project out the students that we have on out-of-district transportation right now through the end of the fiscal year. There's a few reasons why we need this transfer. When we budgeted for transportation last year, we put more money in driver salaries. I think I've mentioned this before, that we kind of leveraged it between our own vehicles and drivers providing the service and contracting out. So the plan at the time was to try to do as many routes ourselves, because that is a more economical way to do it. So right now, we are still using more contracted providers. We're waiting the delivery of some special education vehicles that we were afforded through the capital budget last year, so once we have those vehicles and if we have enough staff, the hope is to bring those, some of those routes back in-house. But in the meantime, we're using the, we're using a lot of out-of-district vendors. We also had, last year we had several students who were transported by their parents and guardians, and right now, this year, we only have one. And that's a much less costly way to provide transportation. Parents are reimbursed at a rate that's dictated by the Department of Education, and it averages around, you know, it averages around $80 or so per week. So when we, when we outsource it, we're looking at about 300 and an average of $350 per day. So you can see, you know, that small switch could make a big difference. McKinny-Vento routes are a little bit less, because we share them between districts, and it really just depends how far the student is going. We have students in Middleborough, New Bedford, Fall River, going to and from Attleboro. We have one that's not on this transfer, that we just haven't gotten all of the information yet, but it's quite possible we could be transporting a student to and from Boston to schools there, so we're trying to work that out now. We have students going to Franklin, so we have quite a few different routes. You know, and simply, we have more foster and homeless students requiring transportation this year. We have five foster students using vendor transportation, and now we're up to 16 McKinny-Vento students. So I know, I think the last time I came, I said it had doubled from, I think, six to 12, and now we're up to 16. So we're really getting more and more requests for cost shares, just almost once a week, or hopefully it's going to slow down. One thing that I thought of is we might be able, some of these students are being transported from some of the shelters in Wareham, so it's quite possible that we might be able to use the, the amount that the state is allotting to districts for some of this. Right now, we're just in the process of filing for those funds. They're supposed to be coming quarterly, but we just don't know how exactly they're coming into the district and how soon we'll have access to those funds. So in the meantime, we have bills to pay to these vendors, so we need to use the local budget, and, you know, it's possible we might be able to charge those costs back to, back to those funds, but that's kind of a stay tuned thing. So that is my transfer request. That being said, I know I mentioned we were transferring from driver salaries, and again, that was budgeted in anticipation of having more drivers and more vehicles and, and using our own sources, but that just hasn't come to fruition quite yet, so we just need to make the switch. So that is my reason for requesting the, the budget transfer. And one thing, too, like the other one, we did increase the FY25 budget. You'll see that in our presentation for out-of-district transportation by about $120,000, based on what we're, you know, what we've been seeing. So this is kind of a theme for this year.
April, question?
So when you mention the sheltered students, is that they are sheltered in Wareham and being transferred to schools outside of Wareham? Is that consistent of the, so that's the migrant students that are being bused out of district?
I think so, because some of the, some of the cost share requests we've got, have had addresses for those shelters, so they must be living there and going to the district that they were previously enrolled, you know, that they are enrolled at and going to.
So do we know, I don't know, maybe even Dr. DeAndrea might know this, do we know if there are other families aside from the migrant families that have been housed in those shelters? There are, okay. I was under the impression, as I'm sure probably a lot of people are, that the only residents or temporary residents in those shelters were of that population, so I am, not that I'm glad to hear that it's not, but I'm, just that we're able to service other families who had been in need, and it's, you know, not necessarily just of a more controversial population.
I believe some of them, you know, and Melissa Fay is here, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of them are for emergency sheltering. I think that's what some of the, the sheltering is for. Is that correct?
And that's the reimbursable by McKinny-Vento, but not until next?
No, it's separate, it's separate from the McKinny-Vento. It's, it's very distinct. So McKinny-Vento is for any homeless student, and now as a result of the emergency shelters that have been opened across the Commonwealth, we are, each district that has students is going to get $104 per student per day for the days that they are enrolled in the district. So Melissa and I were on a webinar yesterday from DSE that, you know, started to tell us how we can go about, you know, accessing those funds. So it's really a data collection that we have to do by December 1st to make sure that those students are coded correctly in the student information system, and DSE will grab that information and calculate based on, you know, based on our upload, how much to disperse to the districts, and I believe it's quarterly.
And we also learned the other day that there's two important things. The emergency shelters, on top of like our general shelters that we have in our town, are now at capacity. So even the emergency shelters are at capacity, so that's gonna affect a lot of homelessness for us as well. We also learned that the $104 per day that we receive per student in those shelters is not based on attendance, but rather on enrollment days in the district, up to 200 days per year, which we're not gonna hit, because they opened later in the year. And we have two shelters currently, so one is a emergency homeless shelter, the other is a, what they call now a newcomer shelter, for families that are coming in from out of the country. So those are the two shelters that we, that are eligible to receive this reimbursement from.
And the ones that are being bused to outside districts, that 104 would go to the district they're enrolled in, am I correct, and not into our district?
That would, yeah.
But you're trying to figure out how that, okay.
Yeah, so we have a...
So we may have some on the other end.
We have a list of students, so all the schools are keeping track of students who reside in those shelters that attend our schools, and then Kristen and I go into the portal and adjust that accordingly, so that it's recorded by the state, which students are residing in those shelters and attending our schools, but we don't have control over the, the students that live in the shelter but attend their home district. So that might be New Bedford, Fall River, Boston, we have a couple coming in from Boston. But we would only be eligible to receive that reimbursement for students who live in the shelters in our district, the two shelters in our district, and also attend our schools.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the transfer? Jeff?
So these sped buses, are they replacement of buses that have been taken offline, or they're replacements of buses that you'd like to take offline?
Probably a combination of, of both. These were some that were just part of the, the capital plan rotation last year. I believe there was two, I think it was it two or three?
It was two sped buses. This was from the spring town meeting.
The reason I ask is I'm wondering which is the more critical factor, drivers or the buses? In other words, if you had buses, would you be able to take, keep, keep the business in-house as compared to outside contractors?
I think, I think it's both. I think, because I think if we, I don't know, I would check with Marie Ferreira to double check, but if we had the buses, they're currently on order, we're waiting to take delivery of them, whether or not she could have a driver available, or if we could get one readily available.
Yeah, it's frustrating to hear.
We have spare buses.
We do have.
Yeah, but, but they're not, they're older buses.
Sure they are.
We certainly need to continue to purchase buses as we go forward. I think there's been a little bit of relief as far as hiring. We're not in a, in a, in a same spot we were a year ago. It is a little bit better. We pay well. We pay better than other districts and some of the transportation companies, so, but as Kristen said, it really kinda is still, both of them are really thin.
What, I guess we'd have to solve both problems, but what are, what are the economics associated with it? How much more expensive is it to use outside contractors than to keep it inside?
Well, the outside contractors are charging roughly, on average, when I looked at it quickly today, about $350 per, per route per day, so I think...
And what, and if we had drivers, what do you think it would cost us in-house?
Well, it would cost their hourly rate, whatever that is.
Plus depreciation on the bus.
Yeah, plus fuel, plus, you know, any upkeep, so I don't think it's, I really don't, I think it is cheaper to do it in-house. I haven't really quantified that, but I think generally, the more you can do yourself, it is, it is cheaper.
Yeah, I mean, if you raised, further raised the bus driver salaries, you'd have to raise it for everyone, but it still makes you wonder what the, and I realize it's a relatively complicated analysis, maybe we should raise them some more, just because this idea of going to outside vendors is just so unappealing for multiple reasons.
For, for example, some of our routes here, we have one that is $400 per day. We have between, you know, each one, if you averaged it out for the year, between $50,000 and $90,000 right now for each, per student. And we've got 38 students between foster, homeless, and just out-of-district special ed.
And the difficult piece is as well, that a lot of the students that we're getting in that are homeless and foster students might be in the same family, but might have different schedules, because they're in different schools, so we might have an 8:30 start time versus a 7:05 start time.
I got it.
So now I have to run two bands, so.
So in your, but in your mind, Kristen, is Marie doing everything possible to get more drivers?
I think Marie is doing everything possible to try to control the costs. She's always...
That's a different question.
Yes, I know.
She, I can say she is. She's doing everything.
Signing bonuses, whatever it takes.
We have all those things, yes, they're in place.
I suspected you did, I was just confirming.
Yeah, yeah.
And one thing I do want to say is that sometimes when we had these cost shares, just recently, we had one with another district that we felt was not a good price, so Marie took the time to send it out to our prospective vendors.
This is not a criticism of Marie.
Saved, you know, probably saved, I would say, thousands of dollars for each district.
Yes.
And we're trying to do that now with that Boston student as well, because we feel that that's, we can do a little bit better.
Marie is a New England frugal person, and I love it.
She does a great job.
Just, if you know off the top of your head, what is the state formula for reimbursement of a parent to drive? How does that $80 give?
I think it's like 60 some odd cents per mile.
62, I believe it's 62 cents per mile.
So it's just mileage, not even?
So to and from each way, so from Wareham to the school and back, twice a day.
That's great.
Yes.
Such a, such a deal.
It is.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to accept the transfers?
Seconded.
Any other discussion, and when you cut you off?
No, it's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have the budget.
Okay, yes. So this is an abbreviated version of the presentation from last week. Just to, first of all, thank you to the, the Budget Subcommittee and their help in putting this together. That would be Joyce and Jeff, also to the admin team for the work that they've done putting this together, and of course Andrea. This was a level service budget. It includes steps and lanes for all of our bargaining units, a 5% inflation added to the expenses. We added 4.69% out-of-district placements, that's been given to us by...
Collaborative.
Who was it?
The Occupational Services Division. They set the rates for our private schools, and the collaborative schools that I spoke with, said that they would, to plan on that for them as well.
And then we, we added 5% to utilities, a little bit more for the elementary school, we're still figuring that number out. Okay, so, so what, what I've done is, we have these cost centers in the budget, and I thought I'd go through each of the cost centers, just give you a quick highlight about how much each one costs, and then at the end, compare it to the, to the FY24 budget. So the first part is the district section of the budget. This includes superintendent's office, our technology, the finance office, health services, facilities, and fields and grounds, and that's a total with salaries and expenses of 3 point, about 3.5 million. Also, part of the district is the next slide, which is our tuitions. So we have one student who's going to Bristol County Ag High School. That's $30,000. And then we have kids, students, I think there's 22 that are going to outside collaboratives, yes, 22 collaboratives, 1.9 million, and then 17 that are tuitioned out to private schools, special ed schools, 1.6 million. So that's 3.6 million in tuitions that is included in the budget, and that includes the 4.69% increase. High school salaries and expenses, 9.8 million. High school salaries and expenses, 9.8 million. Anticipated cost for FY25. And again, I want to emphasize, level service budget is if we, if we took all the services, all the positions that we have, currently have in place this year, and moved it to next year, and added all of the lanes and steps and expense increases, what would that cost? Okay, so this is, this will give us kind of an idea what FY25 would look like. So for the high school, like I said, salary expenses, it includes stipends, supplies, utilities, maintenance and technology, that's for all, I'm going to do this for all three buildings, and that's all-inclusive in each of them. So going on to the middle school, salaries and expensive, expenses, 6.7 million, and then the elementary school, obviously being a much larger school, a little over $11 million. And then looking at the remainder of the cost centers, curriculum instruction assessment, this is our assistant superintendent, her secretary, and, and money for professional development, 319,000. Student support services, our special education, out-of-district coordinated salary, director of student support services, contractual services, that's 1.1 million. ELL, this is two teachers, and supplies, 182,000. Our technology, that has an asterisk because that's really in the district section of the budget, but, just to give you an idea of what that costs, it's 469,000. And then our transportation, that's our, our transportation coordinator, secretary, 33 drivers, 11 monitors, and substitutes. And that also includes out-of-district transportation and our homeless transportation, that's almost $3 million. So if you take a look at the cost centers from FY24 and compare them to FY25, this is what it looks like, and you can see each center is, goes up, there are a couple that go down, but for the most part, the increases are due to salaries. Really, this is a very, a budget that is very, very heavy, I think you'll see later on, roughly 80% is salaries of this budget, so that's what most of the increases are. So before offsets, last year FY24 was a $36.9 million budget, and FY25 is projected for $39.3 million. So now if we look at the offsets that we anticipate, a $39 million budget, and you can see here all the offsets that we anticipate, 240 grant of 500,000, and stipends of 15,000. Circuit breaker, we're looking at about a million dollars that we'll be able to use to offset. School nutrition grant, Title I, 522,000. Tag salaries is helping us out with some salaries at the high school. SOA, 125,000, and pre-K revolving. So we have 2 point, just about 2.4 million in offsets that we will apply to this budget, and that drops it to $36,950,000. Now, last year, this is, this is the kicker, last year we had 3.4 million in offset, and that's, that was that, mostly the ESAR money that we're losing. And so that's what's really is significantly impacting this budget. So if we take a look at the budget after offsets for FY25, 36.9 million. FY24 after the offsets was 33.5 million, and the difference is just about 3.5 million, or a 10.26% increase for the FY25. A significant increase, but, you know, it's, it's what we need. We've had what we need in this district for the past couple of years, using ESAR money to bring in the services for our students and give them the services they need to, to achieve academically, and we've seen the results of that. We, we saw the MCAS results where we saw a turn and, and a good jump forward, and we're hoping to capture as much of this money as we can. One thing we need to point out is that bargaining units A, B, and D are negotiating this year, and whatever is finalized in those negotiations will need to be factored into, to this budget. This is just a quick look of where our teachers are in the, in the matrix for the, for the contract. You can see that most of our teachers, it seems, are, is, are in the master's column, and closer to the higher steps, so we have a, a very much more experienced staff, and that also is a little bit more of an expensive staff. Some of the budget drivers, again, 1.5 million of the 2.3 million increases are contractual obligations or salaries. The remaining increases, Chromebooks and out-of-district transportation, heat and utilities, et cetera, is about 800,000, and together, that's, that's our 2.3 million increase. And then, this is where the lack of offsets really impacts us. You can see that we had, we have 1.1 million, $64,000 less this year. You can see the ESAR we lost of 1.8 million, 86,000 in the IVAQ grant, and then even though all of those other grants increased by those amounts listed, the difference between the two of them is a loss of over a million dollars. And again, that's what is really significantly impacting this budget. So, this is just the, the increase in the budget and the loss of revenues of a million dollars, and we're at that 3.4 million, which is the 10% increase. Okay, so what we have here is, Kristin has put together pie charts that help us to look at this budget in, in different ways, so I'm going to let her pick up from here.
So the first chart that you see is just the total budget, total preliminary budget broken out between salaries and expenses. So you can see that 30 point, almost 30.5 million is salaries, and 8.9 million is expenses. So of the total budget, 77.4% is salaries, and 22.6 is expenses, and that's pretty, that's fairly typical for, for school departments. The next one we have is the preliminary budget broken out by function, and these are the function codes as defined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So you can see the largest portion, of course, is instruction at 67%. The next largest portion is pupil services at 11%, and that includes transportation, health services, athletics, and other student activities. After that, we have maintenance and utilities for 9%, and that, of course, includes any of the, your custodial expenses, any of your maintenance expenses, and any utilities. Also at 9% is tuition, that's the out-of-district tuitions that we spoke of, to the private and collaborative, and also to Bristol County Agricultural. After that, it's fairly small, administration, which is the central office, the school committee is 3%, benefits and fixed charges is 1%, and that's benefits for our school nutrition employees, and just a very neglect, there's nothing for, in the 7,000 account which is happening. So you can see, again, pretty typical for schools, the most, most of our expenses are in instruction. And this chart here includes salaries and expenses altogether. So the next one then just takes the salary budget that, that you saw earlier, and says, okay, how do we break that one down? 83% of our salaries are for instruction, and that is also fairly typical, the teachers and paras and other instructional staff. The next largest is in pupil services, so that would be our drivers, our athletic coaches, our health services employees, nurses, CNAs. Next is maintenance and utilities, so that would be our custodians and our maintenance department staff, and then also, administration is 3%, and then also in the salaries, there's a negligible, negligible amount in the benefits and fixed charges, and I believe that is, that's to human resources, I think. And then this here, our chart here, is our preliminary expenses broken down. The most, most of the expenses, on the expenses side, is 41% to tuition, and the next highest one is pupil services, is 19%, so that would be a lot of your fuel for your buses and any of your athletic expenses, any of the health services expenses. There's also maintenance and utilities for 21%, that'd be your custodial supplies, any of your building supplies, equipment supplies, fuel for any of the maintenance vehicles, things of that nature. We also have 12% for instruction, so that's some of your consumables, your school supplies, general classroom supplies, things like that. 6% for administrative supply, so again, that would be central office, superintendent's office, business office, some technology, some technology expenses in there, depending on how they're classified as instruction or district-wide, and then also a small amount for benefits and fixed charges. So, final thoughts?
So, yeah, final thoughts. The total budget, 36 million, 36.9 million, that's a 3.5 million dollar increase, or As I said before, the ESAR money was used to provide this district with the resources that it needs to provide a quality education to our students, and any amount cut will be impactful. I, I showed that even with a, with a 6.73% increase, which is 2.2 million, we would have to cut 1.1 million dollars from the budget, which is significant, is significant. So we're very, you know, we'll be watching the governor's budget very closely, we're hopeful that she'll come through with some, you know, a, a strong support through Chapter 70, as she did last year, and, and we'll keep looking for ways to meet the needs of the, of the district and save money.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to-
April has the first question.
So I noticed on the, on the ELL budget that that one went down.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was muted. That the ELL budget had gone down from last year to this year, and while I do appreciate, obviously, any place where things can, you know, get shifted to benefit, with the fact that we now, as a district, have more ELL students than we had had previously, I'm just curious how that one is going to impact the next year, and how it, if there's going to be any wiggle room, should we require to have an additional?
Yeah, so we, we ended up, one of our teachers retired, one of our ELL teachers, and we hired a new teacher that came in at a lower step, which is where you see the savings.
Exactly.
We received a newcomer grant from the Department of Education, which will fund a .4 ELL teacher, which we are about to post. That grant will fund that teacher to support the students, and, and I would ask the committee to consider that, it doesn't, that it's not the number of students that are identified as EL, it's the level of support that those students require. So a student coming in as a newcomer who speaks no English requires a much higher level of support and much more hour, many more hours of support services in the school day than a student who has been here and has acquired more English, more of the English language.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was when we were looking at the functions on the pie charts of everything that was broken down on all of them, where it listed capital was at 0%, and I just wanted to, to, to clarify what, what that meant, and why.
So that is how, the categories are how the Department of Ed has us report, and most capital is funded through the town, through the capital budget, not through the local budget. So that's why you don't see anything budgeted for that, or something very little.
Thank you, I was just making sure that I understood what that was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question with the English language learners. It said that there was two teachers, how many students are those two teachers?
So we count students by former English language learners, so when we report to the state, we have to report on former English language learners, so students who were English language learners who have become proficient. They're now called FELs, or former English language learners. We report on that, we report on our current English language learners. We had this year-
65.
Oh, 63. And that, 63 students, that includes the newcomers that have come into our newcomer shelter, it also includes all of the former English language learners. So currently, we have approximately 38 students who are receiving services, and that is actually after the original budget that we presented to you, because we've had more students come into the shelter who have been identified as English language learners, and they are identified as newcomers, which requires a higher level of service.
Okay. So you said there's 38 students currently receiving, and there's two teachers for them?
Two teachers right now, and we are funding through a grant, a upcoming posting for a .4, so that'd be two days a week of an EL teacher, an additional EL teacher, to get us through this period where we have this newcomer shelter in our district.
Okay.
Okay.
Joyce?
So first, I just want to say thank you to Matt and to Kristin for the whole presentation, just this one and the longer one, I know that it was a lot of work. And thank you to all the principals and everyone else who came last week to present. Thank you to the finance committee members, the member of the select board who came to the joint meeting, and I think that was really important. And I don't have any questions, I just want to say that I agree with you, Matt, that going forward, you know, we'll just have to keep a close eye on what is happening, and I feel like this is just the beginning of this process, very early, very early in this process.
Jeff?
So I have, I walk my dog, and my neighbors know I'm on the school committee. And the, one of the questions I get asked is the impact of migrants, immigrants, more accurately, on the budget. So, first question is, we get paid a certain amount when they ask us to take students, us students who are immigrants, correct?
We, we will be, yes.
Yeah, people don't seem to think we have cash flow, that, yeah, promises, the checks in the mail. So where does that money go, and is it significant to talk about it as an offset?
Right, so it's $104 per day, per student, based on the number of days enrolled. So that would start probably on or around October, I think, when we first, when we first had new students coming in. So in December, December 1st, we'll be filing our first upload of, of our information, and at that point, the state has not said, during our webinar yesterday, and in speaking to other school business managers, we don't yet know how that money is going to come to us, whether it comes directly to the town, or whether it goes directly to the school. That part was not discussed. I'm hoping that, I'm meeting with some Cape Cod area business managers tomorrow, and then the beginning of December is the Mass Association of School Business Officials, by monthly meetings, I'm hoping that more information, we do have people from Dussie coming to that meeting, that that- meeting, that that information will be forthcoming, but we don't just yet know how it'll be sent out to the schools and how we can access it. All we know is that it's one-hundred-and-four dollars per student per day. And how many students did we, we were looking at it yesterday, the other day?
So we had to report based on our October first numbers, so we had eighteen students that qualified, we have more than that now. But we were also, we are also recipient of a grant from the Department of Education that's specifically for newcomers, so that amount of money was allotted by how many newcomers we had at that October reporting date. And that will again change, because we have to report again on, in December. It will increase our amount, and there will be additional funding that will be offered to the school systems that house the shelters. So we have received funding from the Department of Education to support, and that is what will support the position that I spoke about, the point-four ELL teacher, to support those students, as well as supplies, including licenses to support education of new coming students, newcomer students.
So are immigrants a subset of newcomers?
They refer to them as newcomers.
What's the definition of a newcomer?
Somebody who recently came to this country and has no English proficiency.
Okay, so they're essentially trying to help us in two different ways. Okay.
We receive funding for our newcomers, which would be the EL teacher, and any supplies associated with educating the newcomers. And then we also get money for the homeless, they're all considered homeless, they all fall under homeless and shelter. The other shelter in our community is not a newcomer shelter, it's a homeless emergency shelter. So that shelter does not have newcomers in it, it has homeless students in it, homeless families, that the state has placed in the shelter in our community. And we also receive, that's the one-hundred-and-four dollars that Kristen was speaking about, that funds those students for every day that they're enrolled in our district.
So theoretically, I know this is the maximum, you could have one-oh-four times the number of students times two-hundred. I know that it's not gonna be two-hundred.
That's maximum, but yes, correct.
But that's, that's the number that we're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, and when it comes, okay, do you have any sense of where is it going? Let's assume the town says, by the way, we gotta check, it's really for your, to cover your expenses. Where would it go? Would it become an offset for this year, for example?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, it depends on when we receive it. But, yeah, I mean, that's how I would anticipate, that we'd use it as an offset.
I mean, is there a revolver, for example, that it-
Right, that's, that's what we, we don't know that quite yet. So if it was a revolving fund, sure, perhaps it could become an offset for next year. What we don't know is whether that, those funds need to be expended by the end of this fiscal year. So there's just, the only thing that we do know is that it's one-hundred-and-four dollars a day per student.
And the checks in the mail, right.
And the check, and we have to file a report by December first, and then after that, we-
But that's basically, at least two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars roughly, and it could be more. Okay.
So, and finally, what is, newcomers are only newcomers for the fiscal year in which they arrive, correct? After that, are they considered just regular old students, unless they provide, unless they require special services?
Yeah, so it depends on the progress that they make. So-
Really?
Just as, as special education works, where we measure progress periodically through progress reports and progress monitoring, it's the same with English language acquisition. So it's not how long they're here, it's how quickly they're able to acquire the English language, to be proficient and require less direct services. So it's not time necessary, it's not like six months or twelve months.
So when we count our students on October first or something like that, they're not necessarily counted?
They're counted as EL students, and they're counted as newcomers.
They're still counted as newcomers?
Until they step down from that classification through the progress monitoring, correct?
So every ELL is a newcomer until they reach a level of proficiency?
No. So it depends on what they come to us as. So if, we have students who come to us from different regions of the country, who have been in the country for five years and are higher in their level of English acquisition, they're not gonna come in as a newcomer.
That's what I meant by proficiency.
Right, so newcomers are somebody who just came to this country and has zero English language acquisition.
Although they might.
They might. But we measure that through, that's why the Office of Language Acquisition has all of the testing and the data collection that we do, to see what the proficiency level is.
Okay, so what assumptions, if any, are we making about the two-thousand-twenty-five, it's hard to say that, two-thousand-twenty-five budget with respect to newcomers?
We can't.
We can't.
We'd have to have a crystal ball, there's no way.
Well, you can't even assume one-hundred-and-four times two-hundred?
I don't know.
You mean as a potential offset for FY twenty-five? Or money in the budget? They're just haven't been clear of how we're gonna get this money, when we're gonna get this money, that we-
What we can use it for.
Does the town have any idea that they may be getting a check for two-hundred-thousand-plus?
Yes, they are, they are aware that we're gonna receive money, but they too are in the dark of how that money's gonna arrive.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions about the budget presentation? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one question. So it says possible vote, but we don't have to vote at this point.
No, I don't think so, I think we're so early in the process, I don't think there's any need to vote right now.
I think it has to be post-hearing, the budget hearing.
After next week.
It's always after the budget hearing.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, Dr. Schwam, don't go anywhere, I guess. Next up, we have our annual strategic and improvement plan presentation, and this will require a vote.
Okay, okay, so we're going to tonight go over the school improvement plans for each of the school. Clearly, the school improvement plans are an important part of the work we do. In order to put these together, the teams analyze data, identify strengths and weaknesses, and develop goals that will focus on student achievement. Of course, our core values and mission, it's always important to have these here, remind us, you know, why we got into the work, and what we strive to do every day with our, with each other and with our students. Same thing, our vision, thank you. Priorities and promises, this is from our strategic plan, and clearly, our top priority is student learning, then we have four additional that support that, that work that we do. And certainly, the school improvement plan will touch on all of these priorities. To put the, these plans together, there's lots of different sources of data that is used, demographic data on our students, clearly, student learning data, you know, through NUIA, MCAS, and other common assessments, perceptual data, such as, you know, climate data. And taking all of those and looking at them and see if we are reaching our goals, if we're achieving our vision for our students and our district, and then developing goals that will move us in the right direction in achieving the vision for the district. These are the team members, you know, we did this work, this work started, I should say, in August twenty-first and twenty-second, these were the folks that were part of that, those teams that started looking at the data and what we were gonna put together for these plans. This is ways that the school committee, you guys all have this, and you can access all of the data that these teams have looked at, and look for yourself of what some of the data's saying about our schools, and see why we've decided to go in certain directions. Guiding questions for school improvement, really, what are the outcomes for students and staff that we want? Clearly, it's student achievement, but you really drill down even more into what areas of student achievement might we be falling down, and where we can direct our resources in order to get, to do better in those certain areas. And so seize some of those questions that, that the teams use to focus their efforts. And so on the opening day, these are the steps the administration followed, leading up to our September thirteenth Professional Development Day, when the, when the teachers developed their goals. So the goal, of course, is to have our school improvement plans connected to the strategic plan, to my goals, and then the teacher goals connected to the school improvement plan. So these are the steps that were followed in order to help foster that. So the first school that we will look at is the elementary school. So welcome.
Good evening, school committee. Oh, good evening, school committee. Thank you for having us, I just wanted to introduce, we have here tonight, beginning, Dr. Russo.
Yep, good evening, school committee, it's nice to see you again.
I'm Carol Spinnard, hello, school committee.
She's brand-new, assistant principal, congratulations, Ms. Spinnard.
Kind of.
Yeah, but she's also next to a hero, you know.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for having us tonight. We present the school improvement plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. Before we officially begin, I do want to say thank you to several people, including, first off, the school council. Last year, the Wareham Elementary School Council was a very diverse population of many, many parents, I had many staff members, community members, who gave a lot of feedback throughout the year and continue to do so. So thank you, school council. I want to say thank you to the administration team, the leadership team, the faculty council at Wareham Elementary School, who continue to give feedback on ways to continue to improve the school. And also to the district administration, Dr. Schwam and Dr. DeAndrea, for really guiding us through the strategic plan and school improvement plan. We're gonna begin with last year's goals. It was very simple, I was brand-new principal of grade three and four. I hadn't had a role in MCAS before, I was an early childhood school principal, so my goal really was to sink into the MCAS and to improve the MCAS scores. I was fresh off the boat, though. I went through, Dr. Russo and I went through all of the trainings and all of PD for the MCAS, because we hadn't really experienced it before. That being said, I knew there was a deficit, and I made it a mission to work to improve in ELA, mathematics, and of course, our school attendance. I will say that we have made improvements, there's more improvements to be made. My goal last year was fifty percent proficiency, we nearly got there in mathematics with forty-three percent proficiency, and as you know, we did make strides, and we became a school of recognition because of that, and we're very, very proud of that. But our work is not nearly complete, and tonight, we're going to showcase what it is we're going to continue to improve on in Wareham Elementary School. Last year, we worked tremendously hard to improve writing, it was our first year of empowering writers and the program to work with students on improving their writing. We worked diligently in mathematics, we really promoted and continued to work through our Envision program, we worked through ST Math, which is just a programmatic feature to it, but there was fidelity within that, that created a lot of automaticity for our students, I think that's part of our increase, and we did a dynamic job of attendance. And through the leadership team, guidance counselors, really did just a fantastic job of improving our attendance dramatically, and it's continued to flourish at Wareham Elementary School. So we're very proud of the continued regular attendance of our students. I'm going to now begin our presentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four goals. Again, you will see achievement in ELA and mathematics has not changed, it's still fifty percent, and we will get there, and that's the beginning, so I will open it up to that. So first is student learning ELA. Students will increase their writing fluency and ability to respond to texts measured by their achievement on the twenty-twenty-four MCAS ELA from thirty-three to fifty percent in grade three, and from forty percent to fifty percent in grade four. Again, it's still the fifty percent margin of achievement. We're writing a lot at Wareham Elementary School. We recognize that our students, we've done a very good job of teaching children how to read, but we talk about application a lot. We have a deficit in application. Students are reading, they're inputting, inputting, outputting, it's the output that we are looking at, it's not, they're not trying, it's just the effectiveness of the writing samples, and where, we've done a lot of studies on it, we're looking at it. The team will also talk about the margin of success we have with partially meeting. We have this many students in red, we have this many students in green, we have this many students in blue, and we have this many, right? Sixty percent of our population partially meeting. Well, in, within that, we also have many students who are missing proficiency by one, two questions, or writing just a little bit better. So we're working on that in our tier-one instruction to really set the bar when it comes to our second year of writing. And that is about ELA.
For the math, the student learning math goal is also the same as the measures last year. The students will increase their understanding of number cents and the application of skills as measured by their achievement on the twenty-twenty-four MCAS math, from twenty-three to fifty percent in grade three, and from forty-three to fifty percent in grade four. And just like ELA, we're keeping the same fifty percent. And to speak to Mrs. Chandler's point, we do have a lot in that partially met category of MCAS, especially in grade three. However, forty students that are in that range are within ten points of becoming met. So that's our targeted, like, our tier-one instruction is going to be targeted at those students to boost them up, to get them to where they need to be. So we've identified that through the data, and that's gonna be our focus for the school year, to increase, to continue to increase that percentage, to that fifty percent. And I also wanted to add, we have adopted a new, the Bridges Math Program, we've incorporated the number corner piece, which is instrumental in teaching, it's a daily workout for these, for the students, it's from pre-K all the way to grade four. It's a quick twenty-minute workout where the students are addressing skills daily. It works around the calendar, it works in geometry, it works in area, it works in multiplication, arrays, facts. It's very fascinating, and I invite any of you to come and watch one of our number corners, any of our grade levels, it's, it's, it's very impressive. The vocabulary the students are using, the connections that they're making. So I think adopting the number corner, and then next year, we'll be implementing the full curriculum pre-K to grade four, and I'm very hopeful that that will also help to increase that percentage.
Our third student-
Our third student goal was something that we reflected as an administrative team that we saw that there was a need for. And also, within our school staff surveys, it was also shown that there was a need for this particular goal. And that is to choose, discuss, and utilize exemplars of students' work to improve writing within mathematics and within ELA. So at this time, we are collecting student exemplars so that we can showcase them for students to be able to see, to use as an example, to help them model their writing on. And these are being collected right now. This is something, the exemplars that we are discussing once a month with staff at our grade level meetings, too.
And formally, we've always used exemplars informally, but as an administrative team, we're putting a formal plan together for exemplars and rubrics. Another area that I see in writing that needs improvement at Wareham Elementary School is the utilization of rubrics with writing. And we're working to develop that and make that a concrete plan.
I would just like to add that in analyzing the data and talking about that partially met category, when I first arrived here, that partially met category was the failing category. So as you, as you start to see where, it takes a long time, but as you start to see that there's improvement, and every time we think hard and we have great people leading and we we focus on teaching and learning, we have people talking to teachers, we see that things are actually moving. We wish it would be like in a minute, but it doesn't work that way. But we don't have nearly the amount of students that were in the red that we used to have. And so there is something to be said about that continued sort of commitment to really getting in there to make it different.
Our next goal is report card revision. We've had the same report card since I've been school principal for seven years. It's time for a change. It's lengthy, it's wordy, and it doesn't reflect the data that we're constantly collecting. We've done a beautiful job of collecting data through NUIA. We have data assessment walls that we see. We print out reports to parents, but it's my dream someday to influx the data right into a report card so it's objective for the parents to see. It's time for a change. I'm looking for feedback, so I'm going to create a committee with the teachers, family, parents, and student voice to revise our report card to make it as meaningful as possible for all parties who read it. And finally, social emotional learning. We talked about our focus on Tier One in academics. Tier One, we're looking at that big population for improvement and achievement and that partially met. Well, the opposite is true when it comes to social emotional learning. We do a fantastic job, Tier One. We have a lot of PBIS implementation. We do our daily pledge. We have our rules and routines and expectations in place. Our Tier Two and Tier Three students who have behavioral challenges, it's still really much a struggle. And we are really going to focus, the counselors, social workers, again, on implementing behavior plans to reach the students with Tier Two and Tier Three, especially in the early grades, kindergarten and first grade, who are just moving into the world of public education. We're going to work and to create and have them understand and make sure they understand our school rules and how to be a student. So we continue to work on that, and the Student Service Department's done a beautiful job of connecting with social workers and guidance to create, you know, connections to outside agencies. And we're going to continue to work through that. And that is our plan.
So do we have some questions or comments about the plan? April?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do appreciate you all, and I know that this is going to be two of all the schools presenting tonight, acknowledging where your successes are, but moreover, acknowledging where your shortfalls are and doing the work and the research to figure out how to make those changes. I know that especially some of the upper grades, and I think we focused a lot on their return to school after COVID, not realizing that those elementary school kids that not only were getting used to not necessarily being in daycare centers or in childcare situations and coming into school, having their parents work from home and be in situations that they didn't have that educational structure. So I appreciate, you know, your your candor in putting forth the challenges that you're noticing and the steps that you're taking with realistic and attainable goals for the students and the teachers. And I know it's brick by brick to get, you know, the foundation for where you guys start to getting them up into the middle and the high school. And I'll be excited to see how the progress of these students, you know, goes through every level once they get up there. So I just really appreciate the honest work you guys are doing. So it's, it's not unnoticed.
So thank you, Ms. Rossi.
Bren?
Question I have for you and what I have for everyone is, what can parents do to help support you? What message would you like parents to get so that they can help you on the home side of things to help support your goals?
I think that's a great question. Thank you. Is building relationships with the teachers and having that two-way communicate, actually three-way communication between the student, the parent, and the teacher is really helpful for us, is to have that support for parents to know, you know, where their children are at, to look at it, ask questions of the teacher, ask questions of their children themselves, to be very much involved in what they're learning, what they need to learn, and how to get there. Yep.
Jeff, go ahead.
First of all, I want to congratulate you for your progress on absenteeism.
Thank you.
You know, you don't succeed there, you have almost no chance of succeeding in general. So it's a great first step. Andrea, would you pull up the, what do they call it? School quality?
Measure?
School Quality Measure Overview for 19 through 23. And my first question is, where does, where does the data for this come from?
Andrea?
So we've been involved with the MCIEA, which was where I was when you called me at the governing board meeting this afternoon, but it's the Consortium for Performance-Based Assessments, basically. So we've been involved with this initiative for the last five years, and it was a collective initiative that the union, the superintendent, and had to agree and sign off to become part of. We did, the school committee agreed at the time, and we became part of this consortium. And there, they developed a measure that was statistically significant, arguing that some of the other data that's out there from different, different institutions don't really do the work necessary to come up with a valid survey that's actually going to give you the information. So.
That's quite a mouthful statement.
I know. So I'm just trying to explain why. So we entered into doing this school quality measure, and it's a little bit complicated, the the measure itself, not for the students to take it, but for the analysis end of it. So every year, I try desperately to, to, to make it cleaner, more simple. And I tried this method as a way to say, well, maybe if I can show progress over time, right, with the different schools, to be able to say, well, we were in the green, or now we're in the blue, or now we're in the yellow, or whatever the case may be. I just thought this would be an easier way to understand it. And I don't know that that's true. So we'll see. But it, it's cumulative. Over time, it comes from teachers and students. They both participate in the survey, and then the analysis is.
How do I differentiate between, when I'm looking, between student and teacher?
It's not in this. You have to go to the, the actual dashboard, which is also available to you on the plan. So if, so anyway.
You don't need to go to it.
Okay.
I, I, I'm reading between the lines now, but it sounds like you're not quite there yet in believing in what I'm looking at.
Well, it depends on your questions and what you ask. I know, so, because I have to test it out. I mean, I think I've presented it in four or five different ways to try to help, but it's, you really have to dig in. And you have to, it's not easy. So I have conversations with these professors from UMass to try to get to a point where it's at least somewhat understandable because it really gives us a lot of information. But you have to know how to interpret the information to use it. So the goal is to be able to do that.
Don't take this as criticism, but if you are not sure whether to believe in something, don't present it to us.
Well, no, I, I.
Because I'm not sure what to do with it.
I believe, I believe in the questions. I believe that it gives us a lot of great information. What is difficult is the translation of that. So it needs to be, and I've argued that with them.
People like me to translate what I'm looking at.
Well, I mean, it pretty much says that these, if you're green, you're, you're moving in the right direction. If you're yellow, you're growing. And if you're orange, you need to pay attention to what you're doing.
And do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And Bethany, do you agree with that?
When I look over this chart of the SQM, I see where we could, I see, yes, that there are the colors, some of the colors make sense to, to me as the school principal, my biases, of course, but others, you know, do not.
Well, let me ask you, I would ask the other, if you've got opinions, feel free to share, but I don't want to take more time than the chairman will start to get mad at me. But the, the one question that jumps out at me is, the teaching and, and teaching environment is rated green, which is great.
Yes.
Okay? And yet, learning resources is orange. So can you tell me why that's the case?
Well, I think that based on just purchasing the new resources, that we did have some outdated resources. I do think that, especially in grade three and four, we needed, we were working on reach. We were working out of a little bit of an outdated text for reading and writing. So we are, that's why we have the new Amplify. That's why we have the science of reading. So when I look at that, I would say, yeah, and I think it's going to be green next year, if not blue.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So it's going to go all the way from orange to green or blue?
Sure.
Based on one change?
Based on the math changes, too, that have been made.
Math and ELA.
We have Math Corner. We have Empowering Writers that began last year. We have Amplify this year. So we've really boosted the materials that are provided for teachers.
We, we did a lot of research on various curriculums.
All last year.
And.
It wasn't just last year.
Worked with staff and so forth. The curriculum that, the new curriculum that we have is approved by, as approved by the state. So it's something that's provided a lot of nice resources for us. It embeds a lot of things into it, including handwriting, informal, informal writing pieces, narratives, opinions. There's, it's very rich. It includes science in it, history. So we're, we're very pleased with this new curriculum.
I also think a lot of, the reason it might be orange is we had a lot of teachers that were team teaching. So one teacher might have all the math supplies, and one teacher might have all the ELA supplies. When we came together at WES, everybody was self-contained. So some people didn't have supplies because they moved from Minnet to the middle school to Wes.
Yep.
Supplies are lost along the way, and I guess somewhere stored at Tremontale and whatnot. But, so I think, I think supplies were, were lost, so they didn't have supplies. They were sharing supplies. So that might account for some of the orange feelings as well.
But then I compare to the staff survey, and which, so these are two surveys, both taken by staff. So I, I look at the staff survey that we've given and just to align it with the SQM.
I appreciate Carol's candor. Thank you. And gives me reason for optimism because this was at the end of last year, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
April?
And that's the staff survey, yeah.
This is the professional staff survey results.
Okay. So your goal is 50%. Now, don't take this the wrong way, but if I'm a parent, and it sounds like my child has a 50/50 chance of meeting expectations in literacy and math, okay? Now, obviously, that's, that may be mathematically correct to say, based on your goal, but I'm sure you don't think it's that simple. And that gets to Brennan's point, which is, there, there must be, and it also gets to Colleen's survey, there must be critical elements from student to student that determine which side of that 50% they're on. What do you think the critical elements are? And to condense this question, one of the things in the opening slides that we skipped through quickly, and I understand why we did, it literally says, evaluate what's working and what's not working. So I will also ask you, what's working and what's not working? Because 50% may be a realistic goal, but it's not what you want, I'm sure, as educators.
Yes, and 50% was last year, too. And I remember you asked, you, you spoke to me to that. Do you remember that, Mr. Swat? You thought it was a lofty goal last year. But it's almost attainable this year, so I'm very proud of that. Nevertheless.
Hoist it on your own petard.
I have, I have a reason for why my view of 50% has changed, but we don't need to get into that tonight.
Okay.
Because your superintendent would shoot me if I did.
Okay. Ms. Spinnard says it well. It's application of learning. We teach, 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 teach. We do a very good job of teaching. We have got to make sure students are accountable, and that goes for parents and the teachers. We, we've got to make sure children are working, effective work, effectively. They, that's it. That's what it comes to, that's what it, I see it a lot. I see, we, we work to teach, and we're working on this, the evaluation system this year. We're asking a lot of questions. What are the students doing? We need students working all the time. So it's application of effort, and Ms. Spinnard says it all the time. We've just got, they gain the knowledge, now it's their output, and we have got to make sure they're outputting often.
Accountable is a really big word for a five, six, seven-year-old.
Well, I think that they need to know what they need, they, they should know why they're in school. They should know what they're learning. If you're five years old, they should know that they're working on their letters. I can ask any five-year-old, what are you working on? What are you learning about? And they should be able to tell me at least, oh, we're doing our letters today. I'm learning the letter B. Would I?
But you're suggesting only half of them do.
No, I'm saying that half of them should be able to at least tell me in writing on the MCAS, response to text, too. So there's a lot to it.
So.
I, I'm not saying that 50%. I think that many children can tell me what they're learning about simply, but when it comes to.
Writing.
Writing from a text and grappling text and connecting it to the writing piece, I think that that's where we need our work.
But there's nothing in the teaching, or the resources now better, that we should know that is not working.
As long as the teachers know that the students need to get the work done, to do the work, like, not do for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other choice?
I'll try to, I'll try really hard to be brief. Just to follow up on Jeff's questions about the SQM survey. So I'm curious, what value do you get from that survey that you don't get from the other survey? Or is there?
I think it's, I think it's just a point of knowledge. When you look at, when you look at the colors and do the comparison here, I think that both surveys are relevant.
I think it gives us an opportunity to self-reflect, you know, where we can compare it to the other.
But I'm just wondering if it's a duplication. That's what I'm, I'm wondering. Because I look on, I've looked on that website before, years past, and I looked again today, and some of the questions, 50% of students are replying. So we're talking about a 50, you know, I don't know, other numbers, other numbers there in order to use it as a valuable tool. I guess that's my question. And is it a duplication? And is there a cost to the district?
No, it's free.
Well, it's free, but like, if you were there today, there's a cost to it because.
No, it was after school. I was at a meeting. I didn't, it was on my own time. Like, it was after school.
All right. I, because I just look at, I look at the other districts that are a part of it, and there's like 10, no, not even 10, maybe eight districts. None of them are close by geographically or like part of the DART, you know, we look at the DART districts that are part, none of them are that. So I just don't know how relative it is to our district. But we've already spent enough time talking about it, so I won't anymore. That's for another day.
I actually talked about that today with them, so.
Okay. So you talked about Tesla, let's just talk about the data. So you talked about test, let's just talk about the data that we were supplied. So thank you, we were supplied with so much data. Like the NUIA testing at the elementary school. It was just hard for me because it was in a different format than it's been presented before. It was in a spreadsheet. We used to get the graphs that would show like fall, winter, spring, so you could see the progress of the students. That was really helpful. But this time it was in like by grade, by classroom. So it was a little harder. And sometimes I'll take the time to add up like the grades, but I, I wasn't able to do that this time. So my question is, what does that, what does that tell you? Is it-
Well, I liked it because-
A lot of green, a lot of green. So that must be good, but yes, but that's my question.
What, and Dr. Schwalm worked extensively on this year, this year. What I like about the data that's presented from our standpoint as a school is that we can see where the children are at specifically, but this year we also tied it to what their predictability bill will be on, how they, when they take the MCAS, of what they will score. And to me, that tells me a lot because I can, speaking of parents, I can say, this is where we, we think we're going to be at. How can we make a difference? What can we do? Speaking to the teachers, speaking to parents about if your child's not going to quite get there, how can we get there? So we have the answer from NUIA. They gave us the answer of how we think this child's going to do on the MCAS, but it's November. It's not, I'm not getting the results. I have a prediction. So for that, I feel like this, this data has been, has been very effective.
Additionally, the testing data was shared with all of the parents. It was sent home to them. So the parents were also provided with a prediction, so they could see what the strengths and weaknesses were of their student.
Okay, all right. As long as it, you know, as long as you can interpret it, much more important than me being able to interpret it. The, you talked about MCAS writing, and so you supplied samples of, of writing. Although I was surprised to see student names on them. Was that intentional?
Well, that was, no, it wasn't for you guys. It was for them.
Yeah, yeah. But it was helpful to, to see that. Actually, I just love reading what the kids have written.
And you can see how, it's interesting when you read through it because you can see how hard many of them are trying, right? But their topic development is off or it's their convention. So it's, it was, it's, it was really good. And it's great that state provides that back to us because we have all of those samples to utilize.
And this assessment calendar actually does all of the predictions of what, and what kids should be at, at specific times, not only with the NUIA, but with, as they get older. So every grade has an assessment calendar, and these are the assessments that are done. And then there's expectations in the yellow that say where every student needs to be by the end. So it's very clear that in third grade, the expectation is that every student will receive a 500 on their MCAS in math and English. It's on the assessment calendar. And there's NUIA all the way along to say that if there's trouble, if there's something amiss, we need to address it. And this has been, I think, huge for people. And they have conversations with families all along the way about where, where every student is with these particular measures. Then they give them strategies to take home and they can use them on goals for IEPs and, and help. They're just really clear. And there's no ambiguity in it. We know what needs to happen. Everybody's on board. And I was there yesterday and I, they're all busy and seriously working and really busy.
The student, the student.
Yes. That's what I mean. They're all working and they're writing and thinking and just, you know, involved in what they're doing. So it was very exciting, obviously, to see that. But generally, I think this, this is a huge component of how we're going to make sure our kids are successful.
Okay, thank you. So back to the goals, between, so maybe this is just, just me and my dislike of change, but last year's, I'll take that. Last year's format is different than this year's format. So it's just hard, we look at last year's and then, so this year's presented in a different way, right? So I had a hard time with some of them, just figuring out like how you'll measure your goal. Some of them, it's clearly stated in the goal. You know, we'll go from this number to 50. But let's say on the student learning goal, choose, discuss, and utilize exemplars of students' work to improve student writing in math and, and ELA. So my first question with that, is that a goal or a practice that you, like you said, you, I think you said that you strive to do that anyway, but you're going to make a point to do it this year?
Well, I'll tell you, I got a red and I didn't like that on my staff survey.
Was it your only red? Because that's-
It was my only red.
Okay.
And it says, "Together, teachers and leadership team discuss exemplars of students' work to ensure of its high standard." And we scored a red last year and a red this year. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, yes, it's a goal because I, we need, children need to see what proficient and exemplary looks like in order to try to perform it. And if I have it as a goal and the teachers know it's a goal, they're going to use it more with their students as a tool. So yes, I do say it's a goal. I think it is a missing component in our writing, our strive to, you know, improve our writing.
Okay. So I guess I would just ask, like, what is the measure of that goal? In, in this format, I don't, is that under defined success? Is that the, how you'll measure the goal? And like I said, some of the goals, it's clearly stated in the goal.
Right, right.
But in this one, it's not.
Okay. We're, we're actually talking about how we're going to collect the exemplars, whether we're going to do it online through, by grades. But it's going to be a product. It's a product.
Right.
Of work, of a body of work.
Okay. Well, like, like your other goal, to develop a new report.
It's a, right.
That's clear.
Clear. And same with the example, it's going to be a body of exemplar work, you know, throughout the grades.
Okay.
It's a measure.
All right. So I guess I would only ask that, I don't, I don't know who to ask this of, but maybe the superintendent, that next year, the format be the same and that the goal, the, the measurement of the goal be clearly stated for us, just so, I mean, you know it, you live it, you have every day, this, you know? But just for, am I the only one that, that-
Yes.
Maybe I am. Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
And I'll give Jeff the last question to the elementary school before we move on to the middle school.
Put the NUIA data up again, please.
Okay, then.
Carol, I'm going to ask you the question because until recently, you were a department chair, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so you're closest to the, you spend more time in the classroom, I guess, or used to spend more time in the classroom than any of your colleagues here. Each one of those lines represents a classroom, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as I look at classroom number six, for lack of a better term, and I see 24, 25, 30, and I see, oh, well, let's, let's pick the third classroom, 65, 59, 60. What is the difference in terms of what's happening in those classrooms that is creating such different numbers? Because I'm, think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in a grade one, it's a pretty heterogeneous, randomly selected group of students. You may move students occasionally for a variety of reasons, but mostly it's randomly put into a classroom. So why would you have such a dramatic difference between one classroom and another?
Well, some of our classrooms are inclusion classrooms, so we will have special ed students in them. Some of our classrooms have the ELL student population in them as well. So depending on the level of their proficiency in English, that might impact their scoring as well. And sometimes it just might be a random group of kids, believe it or not, I know you're not going to believe me, some of the students don't know how to use trackpads and the computers and the Chromebooks, and NUIA is taking on the Chromebooks. So sometimes the tech proficiency might be jaded, is jading those scores as well. These, they're five, six, seven-year-olds. And so I, I think that might be part of it. Also, again, speaking to, we have new curriculum now where we also have a lot of new teachers coming in. We have a turnover of teachers. When teachers retire, what's left in the classroom, the other teacher inherits. But we have curriculum we're offering them that they haven't figured out yet. It might not be complete because it's nine, 10 years old. So the curriculum piece might not be 100% intact, depending on which classroom. So that's what I can speak to as part of the discrepancies between classrooms.
I wouldn't ask you the question if I didn't believe your answer, okay? But having said that, I will, I have to ask the follow-up question, which is, to what degree is it the teacher, his or herself, that is creating the differences in scores? It can't be all ELL, inclusion, techno, technology, et cetera. There's got to be some differences in, I don't know, differentiated instruction ability, some number of years' teaching, something like that. Or are you saying it's basically not the teacher?
Oh, it could be the teacher, yes. It could be any of those factors. And if it is the teacher, that's where one of us would sort of, that's how we identify the weaknesses and we speak to them through evaluations and, you know, we support them and help them in the, in the classroom and give them ideas, cover their classrooms so they can go watch another class that might implement whatever they're doing, that whatever they're struggling with a little better or a little differently. So yes, it, it could definitely be inexperience or, you know-
Life.
Or life.
Life circumstances.
Right.
I understand, but fall, me, and fall, winter, and spring are all about half. So they've had a chance to respond to the input and the constructive criticism that they're receiving. But the chairman has been very, very nice to me, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you very much for the presentation and good luck with your, with your goals.
Thank you.
We always, always hope you achieve them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, we're here in middle school.
We're good. Will Catherine have it all?
I have, I have.
You had time.
I wouldn't grow up.
You had time to figure it all out.
You know what I do? Is I prepare for these meetings.
All right.
It's a big team.
Ready?
Good eyes. Good evening.
I do that all the time.
Good evening, hello. Tracy Cotay, we are here in middle school. We have Lisa Breeze, who is our ELA department chair, Sue Tabor, who's our science social studies department chair, Andrea Erickson is our unified arts department chair, Daniela Favor, an assistant principal, and Catherine Frain, an assistant principal of special education. We are going to review our evidence from our goals from last year. And unfortunately, one of our goals was, a couple of our goals was omitted on here. But we do have our academic goals, and then we'll go over a couple that aren't on here. Andrea's like, why didn't you fix it? It's because we've had 20,000 versions of this because we're constantly fixing it and we missed it. So I figured they didn't have it anyhow, so.
Sorry.
It's not your fault. It's really our fault because we missed it, but there were a lot of versions. Because we start this, as you know, in August. So our goals from last year, for math, focused on our performance-based assessments and on our constructed responses. I'm, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with constructed responses in math. It's not just like a word problem that you would normally know. I do have an example here I can pass out to you. But it's, it's very much pot A, B, C, D, they're building on each other, and it's quite intense. I have a fifth grade version of one that I can share with you before we walk away. So those were our, our math two goals. And for the math goals, how it was measured, we really measured it based by the performance-based assessments. And so for the real-world applications in our performance-based assessments, 72% scored 70% or higher on two math performance-based assessments. When we say that we would increase in math, SGP's for all students. The math increasing and the constructive responses, for grade five, it was a negative percent, 1%. For grade six, it was a negative 3%. And for grade seven, it was a positive 9%. So we did see an increase in grade seven. What do we do? It's different, what we do and what we see in classrooms. Some teachers go about it in a different way. And when we're looking at NUIA scores, when we're looking at MCAS scores, NUIA scores guide us throughout the year. MCAS is just a one-shot deal. NUIA kind of, we get it in the fall and then we get it again in January. And it really structures, okay, so what are you doing in your classroom that's making a difference? Why are your kids progressing? So we sit as a math department and are constantly reviewing that data. Who's, do their scores for NUIA match the scores that they received in the spring for MCAS? So, so that's a, that's a constant for us at the middle school. For ELA, for last year, our goals?
We focused on writing. Last year, we wanted to increase by 10% and we did make progress in all three grades. Sorry. We made some changes in revising our writing benchmarks to make them more meaningful with the current ELA units and not just another day of testing. We brought back, after COVID, we really focused again on the common graphical organizers. And building student, analysis writing is challenging. So we focused on that. By the end of the year, we started having science and social studies teachers working with the ELA teachers to incorporate more writing in their classes as well.
And for our social, emotional learning goal, last year was the first year that we were able to implement PBIS the way that we'd like to. We were able to gather, we were able to meet. Our counselors and our admin used a push-in model where they would go into classrooms once a month and do targeted lessons on such things as kindness, bullying, progress reports, good anxiety, bad anxiety, racial slurs, whatever was the catch at the time, in all grade levels. We reactivated and were able to start our PBIS PLC, and they meet on a monthly basis. And we used a, a ticketed reward system with our students where we targeted our core values, thoughtfulness, responsibility, respectfulness. And each week, students were able to earn tickets when they were observed being, or implementing one of the, whatever that targeted behavior for the week was. Their ticket then went into a, a large jar. Every month, we pulled rewards and they earned lunch with the principal or extra recess or, oh, passes to sit with their friends at lunch because they have assigned lunch tables. Or one of the favorite ones, they got a fast pass that gets to skip them to the front of a lunch line. So that we were actually targeting and rewarding when we saw the good behaviors. And we target them, even still do on a weekly basis, like this week's Mrs., who, morning announcements will say, this week we're focusing on being responsible. And, you know, it might be in the lunchroom this week, it might be turning in your homework or bringing report cards back signed, or whatever that announced behavior is. And the kids love to get tickets and they love to go. And it could be something as simple as game day with the principal in the library during their enrichment class. And they all, I, I won it! Like, so they've kind of bought in and they like to be caught being on the good side.
Okay. And our, another goal that we had was for college and career. And for the second year in a row, we had a college and career month. And it took place in March and the whole school participated. College and career activities and discussions were integrated into all content areas. Students played college bingo where they asked teachers questions about their college careers and won prizes donated by various colleges and trade schools. And students from our honor society wrote letters to the colleges in order to get those donations. New this year, we also had three college and career panels of professionals to present to each grade level. We had 13 professionals from the community come to present for our students. Some of the professions included police officers. We had an illustrator and graphic designer, a journalist, a NICU nurse, a mortgage banker, a marine biologist, an electrical apprentice, an art teacher, and we had a man and a woman from the Army National Guard. Students wrote the questions for our presenters in their ELA classes and a team of four students asked the questions during the panels.
All right. And then moving on to this school year. All right, and then moving on to this school year, our first goal is ELA.
All right. So we realized we made growth last year, but we didn't hit the target that we wanted. So we looked deeper and noticed that there's, seems to have been a change in how the essays have been scored. Sorry.
No, there was. There was a mistake in how they were scored.
So we reached out, well.
I'm just saying.
I, I sent an email to the Department of Ed and asked for clarification, but it must not have been the only one because they put out something after the fact to all schools on the scoring of the essays. But it was vague and not enough for our ELA department. So we dissected the rubric. We looked at the new exemplars they put out and tried to figure out what they were awarding points for and how we could get those for our students.
And we also analyzed our students.
Yes, oh.
Writing.
Did you figure it out?
No, no, no. But we, we do have a plan in place that we think is going to make improvements. So now what we're doing is we revised our, our graphic organizer. We're still using the same rubric the state uses. We have a checklist that we use. We have a folder that we share with the science and social studies teachers. Everybody, there's videos English teachers have made to help other content teachers be on the same page with us with writing these text-based responses. So we're optimistic that we're moving in the right direction with the information we've been provided from the state.
Everybody gets one?
Yes, please.
Do I get one?
Sure.
Jamie, Jamie has to get one.
There's probably enough.
Yeah.
All right, so the next goal has to involve with ELA constructed, I mean math constructed responses. Again, 10% growth. So we did see some areas of growth. COVID really set us behind in writing with ELA and math. And so we have a renewed focus in all areas and all subjects for math. I mean, for writing. In math, it just happens to be our constructed responses. It's very different setup for math. They're very lengthy and responses and it's really a perseverance. That's a fifth grade. That's what they're asking, fifth grade.
Really?
Fifth grade is given four of those.
I would fail fifth grade.
Four of those throughout two days. All right, that's fifth grade. So.
It's a trick question because if you don't read them to see.
So what we're doing at the middle school, we have data team meetings. We have curriculum meetings. We're sitting, you know, so I passed this out during our math department meeting and I said, all right, let's do this. And so the teachers are sitting there, you know. I mean, when you have a 10-year-old sitting there after testing the entire day before and now you get this, it's really, it really does have to do with not just knowing the math. They have to be fluent readers. They have to have a plan. They can't just do this without a plan, right? And so, and they have to persevere through it. And some of them, when they look at just that sheet, they're like, oh my God. Especially our really low students and our special ed students. So we have just made a very purposeful effort this year in making sure that our students see these very often. It's time-consuming because you just don't give it to them. You have to teach them how to dissect that and how to persevere through it and what to do if they don't even know A. Because you can't move on if you don't know A. And so we have a graphic organizer called Rust that the teachers really like to use, that they're using in all three grade levels. Different teachers are going about it in different ways and I'm okay with that. They have their own teaching styles. However, we're sharing what we're doing because some people did meet with more successes than others last year. And so we're also going in and observing other teachers, how they're writing, how they're teaching writing and how they're teaching Rust. So that is our goal, is to continue that for this year and hopefully make better strides with that in mathematics.
All right. Our social emotional learning and climate goal is we're always looking how we can continue to reduce the number of discipline referrals at the middle school. One of our big focuses this year is helping all staff with a behavior management plan. Make sure they have one implemented if they need help on developing one. We'll help them with that. And then we're always in the classrooms daily. And, you know, we go back and we help staff analyze data. What's happening in your classroom? Why? How can you change it? How can you correct it yourself? And we'll continue to do that.
In line with that, we are continuing with our PBIS initiative along with some of the funds. We've doing some of the fun stuff that Ms. Tabor brought up. We've incorporated a newsletter to share with the staff, posted PBIS instructions for the staff in our school Google classroom, updated targeted behaviors each week. And we base these targeted behaviors that we're trying to reward and incentivize and teach off of the discipline data and issues arising in the school. We're also doing some fun things for the staff with a recognition of a weekly turn at the good parking spot Ms. Coté has provided us. And along with some of the fun stuff, we're doing the deeper dive that Mr. LaFavor just mentioned, which is we are encouraging staff to have, we're mandating staff have their own behavior intervention plan. And we're having counselors meet with regular ed and special ed teachers to work on point sheets for check-in, check-outs and largely moving to a digital format so we can track that behavioral data to see if we can see trends, like are there certain times of days, subjects, issues that are arising and how can we build support around that? Our BCBA is also working with our counselors and special ed teachers, again, on those tier-two students, creating incentives and consequences for students. And she's teaching them how to track data and finding places and patterns of note. We are using, counselors are going to the CPT time to identify students who might need intervention and to implement them appropriately. And for our sub-separates, our tier-three students, we are keeping data more formally and updating our behavioral data sheets all online so that we can update behavioral intervention plans in accordance with DESI mandates for the 2022 discipline update.
Questions, concerns?
April?
So, you know, again, thank you guys for always, you know, acknowledging where your work needs to be done. In regards to the, the social emotional and the, the discipline referrals, are you noticing specific types of behavior or in specific grade levels that you're seeing more versus less referrals from? Is it sort of a broad range, like hitting every grade in the middle school? And do you also believe that this is still kind of, not, not to put it, is it like, sort of like the, the kind of the feral coming out of COVID behaviors? Like there's the, the lack of the structure and kind of coming back into structured behaviors and rebelling and not having, are you seeing, I know you said you're trying to track patterns, but are you seeing, is it the same kids or is it the same patterns? Like, is it maybe one's having a bad day and the same behavior is exhibited by different individuals? Or is it a frequent flyer list that you're trying to mitigate?
So it's different. It's a, it's a variety this year. We had a really quiet September and October and an extremely, extremely busy November. And there's not many days in November, so I'm finding it hard to believe. But we have a frequent flyer list. I would say about five, maybe not 5%, 3% of our population that is recurrence. And that's where Ms. Frain is, is talking about really doing a tier-two, sometimes a tier-three, once we collect the data and see how we can intervene. So if we can get information from our BCBA, our counselor, do simple things that can be done in a classroom and if that's not working, consequences, rewards, then where do we go from there? We're also seeing just a lot of middle school-type behaviors. Middle schoolers' brains are not fully developed yet, so they make decisions that they necessarily should not make. In those decisions, it's mainly focused on social aspects. So socially doing something very inappropriate. I also think that it's, it's not just a COVID, coming off of COVID thing. I think it's a not-socializing thing. So we have technology now and as you know, many children don't leave their houses because they're on video games or they're on their phones. So they don't interact with each other. They don't communicate with each other. So we get a lot of things at the middle school that happened on the weekend or the night before and it didn't actually happen live. It happened on social media or in a text or, you know.
I remember that happening when I was working at the middle school and working in those classrooms and, you know, recognizing, you know, the, the frequent flyers at the time who have, you know, obviously since moved on. But, you know, knowing some of the, if it was a, a home situation that they're, you know, responding to and how are you, I know we have a lot of the, the social workers now, which weren't a thing when I worked at the middle school. And I'm, I'm sure a lot of you guys especially are thankful. But how are the, those particular families? How are they receptive or not receptive to the social workers' interventions with their children? And are they, are you finding a lot of, no, not my child? Or are you finding a lot of people that are also recognizing those behaviors at home and are appreciative of your intervention?
I would say this year, I, I would say most parents are appreciative. And, and sometimes they say we're seeing that at home and we don't know what to do. And I, I really do think that they're working with us and appreciative of, of support. And we have dynamic social workers and counselors that really are able to help families, so.
I just really want the public to pay attention to those things because those are items in the budget that may not have been there years past that are, you know, definitely necessary. So I know that when you guys are calculating and going into your, your staff salaries, that these are vital for the state of the educational world now. So just because people didn't see them or have them when they were in school doesn't mean that this day and age, they're not necessary. So thank you.
So just staying on the social emotional, I assume you have a baseline number that you're referring to for referrals that you're going to compare?
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
So you said that teachers will submit, discuss a behavior management plan with their evaluators, your action step. Does that mean individual behavior plans for students that they're submitting or a plan that they have?
Their plan for their classroom.
So every teacher has to submit one of those?
Well, so some submitted and that was dependent upon the evaluator and the person that they're evaluating. And some just told us. But you have to have, how are you dealing with behaviors in your classroom? Do you have rewards? Do you have consequences and what are those? Because as soon as it's a referral and it comes to administration, you've lost that power, right? So what is it in your classroom that you're doing to control the situation? You can't teach unless the situation is being controlled and that starts within the classroom.
So you've had that conversation with each staff member?
Yeah, we have that with the staff at the beginning and then we have that individually when we're meeting with staff.
Okay, thank you. Brendan?
I just had the same question earlier. What, what would you like to see from parents? How can parents help support you guys in your efforts? What's the biggest and best thing that we could do?
Everyone's tired. I would say be involved. Don't stop being involved. I feel like parents feel, you know, in elementary school, tons of parents are involved. They're excited. They get to middle school and that involvement starts to wean. And read with your child. Don't let them just play video games when they get home. We've noticed a, a real lack of students reading at home. And that certainly does not help with our situation. We do have some avid readers, don't get me wrong. But I think reading is, you know, I always used to read with my kids before they went to bed. But I, I think that has stopped, but our middle schoolers certainly need that. Even if you are reading aloud to them, it's still reading. So that we would appreciate.
And I would just add in communication. We tell parents all the time, keep in communication with us. If there's something that's going at home, something's changed. You need our help with something, the channels are always open and that always creates the best environment for everybody. So communication is key.
Joyce?
I had a lot of the same questions about test results and all that, so I won't waste your time because I'm sure the answers are all the same as my questions before. I just wanted to, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. I just want to thank you for making your goals clear and your, and your goals, the, the end result is clear. And, you know, you said a little while ago that the middle school student and their, their struggle. So, and you, and I'm just looking at all of you and you've all like dedicated your careers to these students, so thank you. It's not an easy job, so thank you. And then, so my last question is just the same one about the survey. So do you get any value from the SQM survey that you couldn't get somewhere else?
Well, I don't know what else is out there, but.
No, well, your survey in your own school compared to that.
The professional staff survey. Yeah, well, I mean, the professional staff survey, I think, is very clear-cut. You know, like, how do you feel about this? And the SQM, I have to tell you, it took me a good two years to wrap my head around, like, what are we doing here? But, and we would have discussions about it at our meetings. But I do think, I, I do see value in it, in the dashboard especially. Now that, but you have to dive into it and see what questions they're asking and how that applies to us and what does it mean. I love the student responses. I mean, as a teacher, I guess if I'm, if I'm saying something about myself, well, of course, I'm not going to think something poorly of myself when I'm, you know, writing it. But I think it's valuable for the students to see that data. When we saw the SQM last year, we started asking teachers, it, it's about engagement and motivation within contents. So we asked teachers, how about, we didn't mandate it, but we did ask them to survey their students. And I know Andrea and her department, many, after every term, they were surveying students. I have a math teacher that's surveying her math students and she was changing up her lessons based on those surveys. And that came from SQM, so.
Okay. Similar to professional survey, do you survey students at the end of the year? Do you still do that?
Yes, we surveyed the students. Did we survey the students this year? Yes.
Yes, SQM does.
But did we, we had another survey for students. I can't remember.
Oh, no, that was parents.
It was similar to the, to the professional survey.
I think so. I think it was parents and students.
Okay, maybe, maybe it just, maybe too many surveys.
A lot of surveys.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So first, first I want it to be clear that I understand two things. One is that I'm not asking the educators of Mississippi these questions. We're all lucky that we live in Massachusetts with relatively highly educated parents. Nevertheless, we have a national problem that does still include Massachusetts. So, you know, you're just unlucky you get my questions and somebody else doesn't. If I look at the NUIAS math scores for fourth grade, if you could throw those up.
The fourth?
Fourth grade, it's one.
Yep.
Yeah. And I'll ask the department chairs, would you add anything to Carol's explanation for why this is? That's not the slide. In my case, I'm looking at a single slide entitled, "Grade Four: Reading and Math, NUIAS Math Growth, R1, RIT."
Brit?
I think it was at middle school.
This is elementary.
Oh, I gave it to you guys. Sorry.
This one?
This one.
That one.
They don't have it?
No, I got it.
That one.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So in this case, there's even a more dramatic difference from classroom to classroom. And, I mean, look, 44 to 23 from fall to spring in red versus the top one, 53, 39, 60. I mean, dramatic differences. You heard Carol's explanation and I took it as honest and candid and I appreciated it. Would you add anything to it that she, that she already has said?
I mean, I think Carol's explanation, it was very valid. I think, you know, sometimes teachers do go a different way at, at teaching students. Sometimes it might be proficient teaching, but it may not have had been as impactful. It's hard to believe, but you could teach the same thing, the same way, to one class sitting in front of you and the next class and get different results. So at the middle school, we have the luxury. You know, Lisa teaches three ELA classes and she gets different results with all three ELA classes. So sometimes, I guess we could say it's the teaching, but sometimes it is the class makeup. It may be that we have one very distractible student in the class and that may be an issue too. So that's why we're going into the classrooms trying to. So that's why we're going into the classrooms, trying to make plans for students. Um, and it definitely could be an inclusion class. I don't know because I don't know the makeup of these particular.
But if, if you saw this at the end of the winter, for example, didn't even have spring results, is this the sort of thing that would cause you as the principal to investigate? Obviously, department head is, is all over this, but would you say, wow, I gotta, I gotta look at this?
Of course, absolutely do.
And, and when you do, what do you discover?
It just, it depends. I mean, I, I think this is telling and I think, I look at that and I have the MCAS scores. And then I sit down and I personally meet with every single math and ELA teacher at the beginning of the school year. We have a candid conversation. And if it's someone that's the lowest, I will tell them. I had a candid conversation. You were the lowest in this grade level for ELA. Matter of fact, you were the lowest in the building. And then we go from there. Um, sometimes we have tears and, and sometimes we try to figure it out and sometimes I have the answers and sometimes I don't have the answers. Sometimes I have strategies and sometimes I don't. And I sometimes will say to the department chair or the evaluator that's in charge, let's make a plan, um, and see what we're going to do. Um, it's not as easy to say that this is, this is why this happened. If I knew this is why this has happened and I could fix it.
We'd be millionaires.
Then I, trust me, I would.
I, I understand it's complex with a lot of variables. And in some ways this is simplistic, but it's also real.
Yeah, it is real.
And I have to react to it, but I'm not educated, uh, about the students and et cetera.
I mean, I, I think as principals, as department chairs and evaluators, we have the names, um, and we can say, and when we go to NUIA, I can click and I can click on the names. Um, and that's what I just did with my math department. And in red, I clicked on the names and I printed all the, the kids out. And, um, there was, you know, grades five, six and seven in there. And the sixth grade teachers were looking at, um, the data from seventh grade because they're now seventh graders and they're like, oh, I had that student and this is why this, I think this happened. So we were having those conversations. We were, we were narrowing it down to individual students, not just individual classrooms. So.
So how many of you would describe your average student as apathetic?
I don't, I don't think so.
Do you, do you think? Do you think you can look at the, the paper record of a student, including all the demographic information and say, well, that student is probably apathetic and be right most of the time? Or do you think it's much more complicated than that?
Much more, I, I definitely wouldn't say average and.
Is apathy a problem?
Maybe at times. I wouldn't say across the board.
No, I wouldn't either.
A child may have a time where they're apathetic, you know, a, a period of, of whatever's going on for, as we all do in our lives. But as a general, you know, norm, um, no.
They may, they may struggle for a lot of reasons and it may show up, you know, in the PBIS data, but you wouldn't describe apathy as the one, first or second or third problem in the school?
No.
Okay. Last question. The superintendent has been hiding something. He has, he, he has a magic wand, okay? He's hesitant to use it because it makes him look powerful, much more powerful than, right? But if he had one and he took it out of his pocket, what would you want him to do to make your life easier and more successful at the middle school?
Just keep everybody happy.
Yeah.
Somebody answer so we can go.
I'm sorry.
We would end the meeting.
I didn't hear that. Did you hear that?
Tracy wins. She said, Anne, somebody answer so we can go. It's quarter of nine, so.
I think let us keep doing what we're doing. We have people in positions where like every time you make a change, you know, everybody has to readjust and every.
You meaning the school committee?
No, no, you, you as a teacher, as a, as a professional, you know, um, with your classes, you need to have time to just do your job.
Yeah, we feel like we have what we need. I think the, the majority of us feel as though like we're in a good place. So we just need to.
Maintain.
We've had a lot of changes, um, especially at the middle school. We had mine it there. We based a schedule around mine it and, you know, so it, it's, we're finally at a place. We were doubled up in classes and, and we had COVID and so we just feel like we're on a roll.
We're breathing.
And we felt like we were on a roll right before COVID hit.
Yes, that's true.
Like that was great year. And, and last year was like, all right, we're just here. Like, all right, we're breathing. But now we feel like, yeah, we're on a roll.
You believe you have momentum?
We have a plan.
And momentum, yes.
Have goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wareham Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, Mr. Palladino, you have fifteen seconds to finish your.
Do you have enough space, you guys? Am I, do you want my leave?
I don't want you to leave. Would you want to sit on that side or something? I don't know.
No, I'm not sitting on that side.
Why, is that the danger side?
No, it's just it's sideways and I'm, and my back is to people. I hate it.
Amy, you can sit here if you can.
Oh. I didn't know there was anything. I'm good. You good? Have microphones?
All right, well, thanks for having us.
I'm glad you need some space.
No, I'm good, I'm good. So I just wanted to, uh, stop by doing, um, introductions and just making sure that you know everyone that's in front of you. Ms. Dionne, as you know, is one of our department heads. Uh, Ms. Kavicki is the assistant principal. Mr. Skelly is a department head. Mr. Murray, department head. Ms. Cannon is an assistant principal and Ms. Huzza is a department head. So thanks for having us here tonight. Uh, before we get started, I just want to thank a lot of people who were involved in our school improvement, development and plan. Certainly want to thank our school council, our staff, our department heads, our parents, students for being involved in the process. It was a great process and we're excited to be here and to report on last year's school improvement goals and to kind of give you the results of those goals. And then we'll dive into this year's goals. So I have the pleasure of starting us off. Uh, one of the things, as you remember, we had, uh, tough attendance during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. And we really wanted to make that a goal. Uh, our goal was to maintain at least a ninety-two percent attendance, which we obviously did better than that, which we're excited about. And we had a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations and home visits and things of that nature to really dissect the data and get down to the bottom of it. And I think it was a team effort, not just with the deans and our weekly meetings, our school resource officer, department heads, our SSC group, student support council, our nurses, our nurses at the time. And, uh, the courts were obviously helpful as well as we filed CRAs. So that's kind of, uh, what got us to the ninety-five percent. And as you'll hear, we're trying to keep this a goal because I really feel it's important to be on the job and doing the job and you need to be in school to do that. So that's what we have for, uh, attendance. I'll turn it over to Kim for discipline.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, one of our goals from last year was centered around decreasing student discipline as compared to the previous school year. Uh, coming out of the pandemic, we saw, uh, students struggling in this area and so, um, still working on that as well, but we did make some progress. Uh, so we had twenty-one students that were recommended for counseling. Uh, we focused a lot on the reasons, trying to diagnose the reasons for the student behavior so that we could put in place systems that would help improve that behavior. And so one of those things that we did was implement, uh, we had counseling through High Point. Uh, and we also added the third dean for solely grade eight. That was an added position last year. We aligned our dean and guidance counselor caseloads to foster the relationships there and to also help build, um, improve and strengthen that knowledge of each individual student's circumstance. Uh, in, in regards to results, our out of school suspension rate remained about consistent with the prior year. We did improve the in-school suspension rate a slight amount. Uh, it decreased just by one percent.
Mr. Skelly and Mr. Murray are going to take a look at student learning.
So for our student learning goal, um, for MCAS, uh, our goal was to, um, for our data to increase by ten percent the number of, um, the percentage of students in the meeting or exceeding, um, categories on the MCAS in math and ELA, um, last school year. And throughout the year, we, you know, we conduct all sorts of formative and summative assessments and monthly benchmarks in our, uh, math and English classes and core math and core English classes through, whether it's, uh, paper-based or computer-based on Edge Elastic. Uh, for last year, the results for the MCAS for grade eight in math, uh, for, we improved by seven percent. Uh, we went down a little bit in grade eight for ELA and we're consistent for science, just to add in the science piece. Uh, for grade ten, we, uh, met the goal. Uh, we improved by ten percent, uh, for the percentage of students, um, meeting or exceeding expectations. And we improved by fourteen percent for grade ten ELA. And also in regards to, um, core ELA, uh, we had a, uh, we're very fortunate to get a grant last year, uh, through DESI and, uh, with the help of, um, Dr. Schwam, we owe a debt of gratitude for, and we were able to bring back, uh, core ELA for fifty students, uh, for the spring semester. And again, those students were, had various assessments throughout the year as well.
We have an unprecedented number of students, uh, taking two English classes right now in what we call core English. So, uh, eighth grade in particular, uh, is, is a new one for us. So we have, I think, running four of those. And, um, you know, it's, it was good because to start it, um, in the middle of last year, it was a little hectic, uh, not doing anything in the middle of the year. But, um, you got the ball rolling with it and then, um, you know, I don't want to jump the gun into the, the next presentation.
You've got literacy, so you can dovetail.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, it's, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a, it's certainly a school-wide effort, but, um, there's an awful lot of changes that have occurred that I guess was started with the, uh, the increase in the core classes. But, um, among them is the introduction of a, a sort of a wide-ranging curriculum, uh, delivery program called Study Sync. The introduction of, uh, uh, of the, uh, NUIA into the, the high school. That data, I'm excited to, uh, to, uh, see what that produces as well. And also, in fact, we're giving our, um, our second test, uh, end of, uh, after we come back from the break, all the class will be doing that. Um, and analyzing that data in the upcoming end service days. In addition, we have, um, the, um, uh, the help of consultants, um, from TNTP, um, who are working with us very closely. Uh, we have a wonderful consultant named, uh, Liza Zerife, uh, who's come in, uh, to the school, work with teachers, is going to do so again in a couple of weeks. Um, she's been very helpful in helping us to interpret the data. Um, and also to, you know, sort of help us fine tune, uh, the curriculum expectations, uh, that the new, the new test, um, and its challenges present. So in terms of literacy across the curriculum, that's something that of course the state has called for, um, with the state standards since two thousand seventeen, sixteen, sorry. And the, um, that basically involves, I think, in, in, in the case of, of most of the department, departments, uh, portfolio pieces, um, that, uh, re, that require a, you know, reading and writing essentially, um, in the discipline, uh, in which they are, uh, you know, being, being tested or assessed. You know, so science and it's not, it's not like there isn't reading in, uh, in science, you know, or, or even in math, but, uh, these, uh, or, or, uh, phys ed, for example, um, they, they take, uh, they also do reading and writing. So that does reflect through the links of that slide.
Ms. Dionne is going to move on to community college, career, life and professional learning.
All right, so within community college and career, um, we need to, we looked at updating curriculum to bring it more up to date, um, to meet those, to meet that need. In addition, we had five new electives that were created and we, uh, new curriculum had to be written for that as well. Um, in a kind of looking at how careers work, how, how people collaborate together, um, public education generally has content in silos, right? So we are looking at cross-curricular connections and, and having teachers, um, coordinate together, uh, units or lessons that will allow for students to sort of take jobs, you know, within, so like graphic design and fashion marketing, for instance. Those folks would work in a career closely together to, you know, work out, uh, marketing plans or whatnot. So we're looking at having more cross-curricular opportunities, um, across content areas. Uh, additionally, we had to, um, revamp our twenty-first century learning expectations to reflect the need, ask needs for the vision of a graduate. Uh, that was completed. Uh, we have a rubric for that and it's recorded out on report cards. And then down at the bottom, we just have, um, you know, links to examples of different cross-curricular units we have and then updated and created curriculum that was added.
And last but not least, we have Ms. Cannon and Ms. Huzza who are going to talk about social and emotional learning.
Um, so last year, we, to improve our social and emotional learning, um, part of our goal was to bring back High Point, um, and also work with the Office of Beyond School Time to secure a counselor for our grades eleven and twelve students. So we were able to get that High Point partnership reestablished last year, um, through our deans, our guidance counselors, our admin and then our SSC identification. We were able to provide this to twenty-one students who were seen weekly throughout the school year. And then we were also able to hire a counselor, um, and have an initial list of grade eleven and twelve students that were identified in our student support council interventions that were seen through this counselor. Um, so in addition to that, we wanted to create more group counseling opportunities with our social workers. Um, we knew that students were still struggling with a lot of the things similar to what the middle school said. Um, and so what we were able to do last year is we created, um, a lot of social skills groups, um, not just the traditional social skills groups, but to focus on things like mediation and relationship building and areas where, um, discipline was occurring because of the lack of social skills. Um, and our guidance counselors started daily lunch groups, um, that were run during all three lunches, so any students could go during that time. And, um, we initiated the implementation of effective school solutions. So we found that a lot of our students', um, social, emotional difficulties were like very clinical, um, high need students. And so we, um, were able to implement just, um, the very initial steps of effective school solutions. And I'll talk more about how that continued this year.
All right, so we'll move on to this year's school improvement plan and we're going to take it back to Mr. Murray, who is going to talk to us about the progress and the goals for ELA.
Sure. Which I kind of completed in the last presentation a little bit, but I apologize. But yeah, again, uh, let me just see if I missed anything. Move the page. Talking with people who are proficient with Chromebooks. Thanks. No, I'm good, thanks. Didn't bring the reading glasses. But yeah, so, um, the, just, uh, the NUIA gives us an opportunity to, um, test in, uh, language and, and reading, two separate tests. And, uh, there's a, when we look at the, when we look at the standards that were lower than the state average or, or even lower than you want them to be, um, they, they're, uh, there's a lot of common patterns and, and the funny thing with English is they, they, they do, uh, play into each other, you know? So if you, uh, if you're having trouble finding the main idea in a, in a piece of writing, you're going to have a, a hard time writing about it, uh, and expressing it and analyzing it. Additionally, um, you know, the ability to express yourself, you know, includes, uh, clear, simple sentences and, uh, you know, knowledge of grammar. So, um, that's something that's very much been stressed, um, because of, uh, in, in, sorry, in reaction to, uh, the scores that we got, got back. So, um, there's a lot of change in, uh, in our approach to English. The teachers are, are working really hard, honestly, every day collaborating, trying to take, um, what they have, um, and sort of meld it with Study Sync and, uh, make it their own. There's an awful lot of choice within Study Sync too. It's not a, a, you know, push a button program. It's, it's an awful lot of, uh, teacher choice, um, and scaffolding and, uh, et cetera. So, um, they are doing that. That's an ongoing thing. I, I see it as a two-year process. Ironically, I guess, we started a process last year trying to, uh, update our. Ironically, I guess, we started a process last year trying to update our curriculum. I think I talked about this a little bit last year at, at one of these meetings. Into the 21st century in terms of inclusivity and cultural inclusivity and modern, more modern writing, shorter pieces and more nonfiction pieces, pieces that will lend, lend us the ability to provide two, two pieces that students can write about in a longer open response, which is something that they have to do in the test. So it's a, again, it's a, it's a process, it's not, doesn't happen overnight, but it's, it's happening.
All right. And Mr. Skelly will go on to math.
Yep. So again, similar to our English goal, our goal for math is similar to last year in that we want the combined percentage of students that score in the exceeding and meeting expectations in grade eight and 10 to increase by 10% compared to the previous year. As I mentioned, we did meet that goal in grade 10 last year, but we fell a little bit short in grade eight. So again, that's still our goal this year. And ultimately, again, we've been very fortunate with the grant that Dr. Schwam was able to get for the school to be able to hire a new math teacher to teach core math classes. And that allows us to offer more core math classes. So this year, we have two grade eight core math classes running, two grade nine, and three grade 10 math, core math classes running. And those classes are also tested with NUIA, which is new to the math department. And again, they had their first NUIA test in October, and we've been dissecting the data over the course of this month and making changes to instruction. And we'll have their second NUIA, scheduling that for January, and the third one in March. And hopefully, again, with that added math position, hopefully, we'll see some nice changes and continue our progress in math.
All right. And going back to social and emotional learning, Ms. Cannon and Ms. Souza.
So after the pandemic, so we want to continue with supporting our students with the learning loss from the effects of the pandemic with their social, emotional learning as well as for our staff. So we are going to help with supporting the development of student self-awareness, caring, respect, connection to others, responsible decision-makers, and academic achievers. So we really wanted to look at student surveys and increase special education needs for social, emotional disabilities, and we looked at the data from SIMS and Power School.
So I think I previewed this in the MCAS meeting, that we were going to talk more about this, because at that time, we discussed a lot of our tier-two and tier-three interventions, which we felt supported a lot of our subgroups on the MCAS data because those students were receiving the support. So what we wanted to focus on is, it's two-part this year. So as I mentioned, we did establish Effective School Solutions, so they're working in our TLC program. We're making a lot of adjustments to the practices and protocols for more trauma attuned classrooms. That is actually a very big undertaking because as part of that, we have weekly parent meetings, weekly paraprofessional meetings, weekly TLC staff meetings, and we have weekly administration meetings where we meet with the administration of Effective School Solutions. So we're really, we're meeting a lot, talking a lot about the students' social, emotional health. And then in addition to that, what Effective School Solutions is offering is two different forms of PD for the rest of, the rest of the teachers in the school to help kids. We have a lot of kids that have gone through trauma and aren't necessarily identified in a sub-separate program. So there's two different PDs that are offered. So one of the things is trauma attuned training for all teachers, so anybody can sign up for a trauma attuned training. Classroom strategies, interventions that can be done in the classroom. And then the, like, the second level to that is people can sign up to be champions. And that piece is you attend the trauma attuned training, but you also get a coach who comes into your classroom, will observe your classroom, look at specific kids, and help you within your classroom to address those needs in particular. We're also working, offering PD with Satchel Pulse, the Satchel Pulse series. So that's one of the PDs that's offered on the PD days. We also have a site-based management group on that. And what that offers is a platform to teachers where, let's say, you feel your students have trouble with self-management, they will provide you with lessons and videos that you can teach, like embed into your classroom to work more on tier-one interventions to help students and teachers to understand different strategies you can do. And then one of the goals of the social workers and the school psychologists this year is to implement tier-one strategies into the classroom. So each of them have decided that for students they work with who they feel are struggling, they're going to do observations in the classroom of the student and work with the teacher maybe on different things they can adjust in the classroom to affect, to help that student make progress. And really, that brings, that helps with the classroom management of the class as a whole.
All right. We'll move on to attendance and, you know, although we attained our goal from last year, as you know, attendance is always a battle, and we wanted to keep that on as a goal. We didn't want to let that on our guard, make sure the students are in school. Everything that we did last year, we're going to replicate. We're doing a couple of different things, working with the Fourth District Court on informal CRAs. So this would be done in a different format and wouldn't require the student to miss school to go to court, they could do it in the afternoon. So it's a little bit different, but we still feel it's going to be just as strong. And we also have the probation officer coming in to meet with students on a bi-weekly basis and to meet with our deans. So just looking at it a little differently, we also, last year, aligned our deans to have the same caseload as the guidance counselors. So there's a lot of great collaboration. When we run the attendance concerns, everyone seems to know what's going on with the child, and there's no one kind of slipping through the cracks with the attendance, that's, that's for sure. So we're going to maintain, try and maintain a 95% rate for attendance is our goal once again this year for attendance. And I'll turn it over to Kim to talk about discipline.
So in regards to discipline, we felt that we still had progress to make in those areas, even though we did make some progress last year. So we are looking to decrease the out-of-school suspension rate for this, this current school year. Obviously, when a student's suspended, they're not able to access the curriculum, they're not getting the same services that they would be getting if they were here, and so we want to minimize that as much as possible. As evaluators, our, our, one of our main tools is getting into our classrooms and observing, providing the teachers with feedback. As of last count, I think we're up close to maybe 300 observations or so. We're not exact number, but we're very high, and that's just as of November right now. So we're really coming in strong on that, making sure that we're working with teachers on those tier-one interventions, something that was identified as an area of growth in our NEASC report, using the office of detention as a first tier of discipline, and in-school suspension as second tier, so that we're only suspending when it's truly a safety issue. Along the lines of the CRAs for attendance, also the CRAs for the habitual offenders. And then our deans are working really hard on implementing an educational program in lieu of a suspension that students can complete to help improve the knowledge base and their understanding of why what they're doing could be a potential safety concern, et cetera. And then also, we're, our resources, we have the court, our guidance counselors, social workers, BCBA, department chairs, so definitely an all-hands-on-deck approach in this case.
Certainly entertain any questions you may have. April?
Since you ended on discipline, and that seems to be where I'm focusing on at the moment, do you have a percentage of your out, your current, like, out-of-school suspension rate? And are you looking to decrease the percentage? I wasn't sure if you had what that percentage was.
No, it's, it's, it's not substantial right now, and we're hoping to keep it that way, but I don't have an exact number. I can certainly get that for you.
Okay. And, and much like I asked of the middle school, I know it's, it's probably you guys have, you know, smaller class sizes, so I, it's, you know...
Depends where you're at.
Well, for, not for like the, the element, but for some of the, the classes, they're a little bit small, so it's easier, I would think, to identify your frequent flyers. Like, are they...
Yeah, we, we run reports that, and the deans know, you know, we look at where the referrals are coming from, who the kids are that are getting referrals. It's all done through Google Docs, so it's really easy to decipher all that data. They know who the frequent flyers are without even having to run reports, but it all, it helps us out because we're not dealing with, as an assistant principal or principal, we're not dealing with the day-to-day discipline, but...
So how are you finding the parent piece at the high school level? I know that it's, it's a different transition from middle school where parents tend to be, oh, they're old enough to, you know, kind of go to school. And I know, like, getting information out of a high school student is pulling teeth. It was every one-word answers, "How was school today?" Fine. And then I get a, a different email from a teacher, finding out a different story. So I understand that piece from all sides of it, as a parent and as, you know, having worked in the school. But how do you find the current culture of dealing with parents? I know it changes year to year and I, you know, with their involvement, as they said in the middle school, you know, it's, everyone drinks the Kool-Aid for elementary school because kindergarteners are cute, and then it drops down in the middle school, and I know it drops farther down in the high school. So when you are dealing with things like discipline and attendance, and these parents are like, well, I got to go to work, get, they're getting themselves up for school a lot of the time, or left to their own devices more often than the elementary or the middle school kids, are you finding that the discipline piece for the parental involvement, are you getting like more of the, no, not my kid, or at their age, it's not my problem? Or what, what are you finding for that at-home communication piece for the discipline referrals for the high school?
Our parents are great, and they've always been great, to be quite frank. And I have yet to meet a parent who doesn't want their child to excel in high school. I've never met that person, I hope I never do. But sometimes, you know, they're, to your point, you gave a great description of many of our parents, it's a lot of single parents, a lot of grandparents raising kids, and, and they're struggling because, you know, the kid is at a point now where it's very tough to pull in the reins, and maybe they should have been pulled in a lot earlier and they weren't. So they're frustrated. So what we find is we're really coaching up the parents to try and support them with what they need, but they're always very appreciative and supportive, and it's a team effort, we're trying to work together. And frankly, the best part of my job, and I don't want to speak for everyone here, is when I see this kid that's a senior right now, and we laugh about how he was as an eighth grader and the number of meetings we had, and now he's talking to me about going on to college, and, and I'm like, this is aw... And, and I could sit here all night and talk to you about kids like that. Now, do they cause us a lot of great hairs when they're eighth and ninth graders? Yes. But, you know, we don't give up on anyone, parents don't give up on their kids, and, you know, the communication piece, I know Brendan asked that question before, it is kind of frustrating because when kids are making critical decisions at an older age, it's really when you need to be the most involved, I would argue, versus in elementary school where they're all excited to be in school and they're making relatively great decisions. So, but to answer your question, the parents are great, and, you know, it's, it's really, we're supporting them as much as we are supporting the student.
So I also think that you guys have a unique position, whereas at the high school level, you have, and we as a district have the PASS program as a alternative for students that may really be struggling in that realm. What would your, do you have a percentage or a rough idea of like how many of those students might, or have you transitioned into like the PASS program that may be finding more success there?
Was there tonight?
And do you, do you track, but is that like a quantifiable, like how many we refer over or suggest that at this point, maybe the regular, you know, high school setup isn't ideal for those candidates? And how do you transition them then to having that conversation with their parents or with the, switching them over?
So, you know, it's, it's drop-out prevention, right? It's, it's a program where if kids spin their wheels at the high school, it's an opportunity for them to go there, there are less requirements, it's more convenient for the students that are working. It, it's a small percentage that go, you've been to graduation, about half the kids are from Wareham, and not every kid was from Wareham High School. I mean, we, we could certainly work with Jane and get your numbers on that, exact numbers, but I, I saw five kids in high school tonight that I had a chance to say hello to, and I was pretty excited to see them coming to school because they were, at one point in time, in Wareham High School, spinning their wheels. So we're blessed to have the program, it's a great program, and I think it's great for kids maybe that aren't looking to go to a four-year institution, to go there and, and get their diploma and figure it out and, and not drop out of school, or not go for, you know, GED slash HICET test. It's, it's a great option. It's, it's not something that we actively recruit kids for, it's more, you know, they'll meet with Ms. Kavicki when they're at a point in time where they're just not going to make it, and we try and look at options to keep the kid in school and keep him afloat. We also do a lot with kids that drop out. Ms. Kavicki meets with every kid that's a dropout and makes sure that they understand all the resources that are available. And there's a lot of resources in this area beyond the PASS program, so we make sure that everyone knows what's available. And kids figure it out at some point in time, and they, and a lot of them will come back. It may not just be concurrent with their time at a high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Joyce?
Good news, you've already answered a lot of my questions.
Oh, good.
So, Mr. Murray, what is TNTP?
Oh, no.
He's the king of acronyms, by the way.
There's so many acronyms.
He's the king of acronyms.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a kooky one.
Total...
Yeah, geez.
You can get back to me.
It's a, it's a...
I can hope to get away with that.
Yeah. All right. Send me an email, that's good.
He'll, he'll email it to you. He's the king of emails, he'll take care of that.
Well, I went to all of the workshops and I still don't know the answer. What is it? The New Teacher Project?
Oh, okay.
It's sponsored through the Department of Ed.
Oh, okay. All right.
I wonder, has an acronym.
An acronym, yeah. And here they want the kids to write everything out. Yeah, exactly.
Andrew, you talked about so many different programs and resources for students. Are any of them duplicate? Are they...
So some of the PD offered, I think, are similar, but all kind of focusing on like different groups of students. So the Effective School Solutions is really focusing on special ed students who are identified to be in a substantially separate program. And then the Satchel Pulse is something that they determined last year where they all worked, all the social worker, school psychologists, everybody met, and they went through a bunch of different platforms. And so I think that is really for, it, it provides teachers lessons and things to do in the classroom. It's awesome. Like, I got stuck in it for hours last night just because I don't, I was looking at it for, in preparation for today, but it just has like lessons, like videos that people can watch. And so when, sometimes I think when you're a chemistry teacher, but you're trying to offer, you know, you're trying to work with your students and do a social, emotional learning lesson, sometimes that's overwhelming. And so it really just provides you with exactly what you need to offer a lesson to your class. And there are many lessons, like you're still going to do chemistry, but you're going to do this first. So I think a lot of it is just focusing on different areas and different kids. But we only have so many PD days, and I think there's a lot of people that probably would like to do all of them because they're just, they're different, they're focusing on the same idea, but, I mean, social, emotional learning is so big. It's just, I mean, all of us need social, emotional learning, no matter where we are in our lives. So I just, I think that we definitely see it in like our seniors and our eighth graders in very different ways. Like, our seniors, we're trying to get, you know, we're, they're trying to be adults, we're trying to get them ready to be adults, and our eighth graders, we're trying to get them to keep their hands to themselves and not jump on top of each other. And so I just think there's like such a huge spectrum of need.
All right. Thank you. Speaking of the eighth graders, so you added a dean last year to the eighth grade. Your discipline data is for the whole school. If you were to break out the eighth grade, would you have seen more of an improvement in that group?
Well, the eighth grade, it, it basically comprises 50% of our discipline. So, you know, the, the good news is we had an extra dean. The better news is we dealt with all those small issues, but when we look at data to try and say we've improved our discipline, it's tough to encapsulate that because we dealt with a lot more that normally wouldn't have been able to be dealt with with two deans. But, you know, the eighth graders, just like when the ninth graders were the first group to come into the high school, they struggled, now it's the eighth graders struggle with discipline. And so it's, you know, it's a work in progress with them.
So, sorry, you, I've heard you talk about this before. The more you report, the more...
Yes.
Right, right.
The more, you know, the more people you have doing the reporting.
Right. And we try to document everything so that when we have, you know, a student in front of us, we can see everything that went on from coming in late to school to forgetting to stay for detention. We just feel like we want to have everything in Power School. Again, it's kind of a double-edged sword, it's good and it's bad. And, and, you know, when you're looking at referrals, you're going to have more referrals and...
Is being tardy, is that a referral? Is that considered discipline?
It is, if it's excessive.
It is, okay. Okay.
Three, three or more in a term.
A lot of the consequences too with eighth graders are counseling them, mediating with them. So that's what... them, so that's what I think's tough, too. You look at the discipline number, it's huge, but a lot, they're not getting suspended, like, they have to have, like, the, the talk of appropriate behavior in school and.
Right, well, that's kind of what I was asking, so that number doesn't really tell the whole story.
You know, we deal with, 5% of the population monopolize 95% of our dean's time. It's not like we're dealing with 20% of the population, but it's, you know, there, and then you, you know, Andrea spends a lot of time in, I call it our collaboratives, on the first floor. So, you know, there's a lot of man and woman power that's spent on, on just making sure kids are doing the right thing, but you, you have to have that, you have to have control. School has to be safe so students can learn.
Okay, and this isn't a question, I bet, I noticed on the survey, there was a lot of comments about cellphone use, and since then, you have instituted this committee, and so, you don't have to talk about it tonight.
A few times, and we'll get them, we'll get them in one of these meetings, too.
Yeah, so, another night, we'll hear about that, but, you know, but you.
Let's wait till after New Year's so they get rolling.
But, you know, it's good that you were able to react and, and do something about that, that obviously people were talking about.
The grant didn't hurt.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question for Mr. Murray and Mr. Skelly. So, the NWA, the NUIA testing, say it's again happening in December and January. So, the test happens, what happens next after you get those results? What kind of intervention, how are kids identified and what interventions do you have in place?
So, after we see the results, we can get a report, like, and it, it basically identifies the different areas that they might need extra support in, whether, for instance, it's with algebra problems, geometry, you know, number sense, various different standards, and then we can go back and, you know, plan for appropriate interventions, like, within our regular math classes or core math classes, you know, different sort of, whether it's having a different sort of, like, group activity or station activity for one group of kids to address a certain standard, or IXL or another activity for another group of kids. We're able to kind of really narrow down where the, where the weaknesses is, weaknesses are and address it within our classes.
So, it's up to individual teachers within their individual classrooms, there's no, like, group intervention?
Oh, yeah, 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 we meet as a group with the teachers, obviously, and discuss with them their results, and then share with them, you know, recommendations for what they can do in the classroom.
And is Viking Block using that at all, or?
Oh, yeah, yep, and the kids can meet with their math teachers or any kid, teachers during Viking Block, and I'm also able to meet with students who are struggling during Viking Block as well.
And we could, if there was an extreme case, we could identify the kid and put them in a core class, too. If it was, you know, kid was consistently scoring very low, that's kind of what the core classes are for, but we pre-identify those students based on MCAS, but there could be a kid that kind of slips through the cracks and all of a sudden needs a little remediation beyond the modifications that can be made in the classroom, we could, we could set them up to be.
But are any groups of kids ever taken out, like, from multiple different classes and put together and worked with during an intervention block or anything like that, or it's really just within the individual teacher?
It happens during the enrichment period, through the enrichment period, they would, they would have them, the teachers would sign them up to be with, maybe it might be Justin, for example, and they could be there on a, you know, two days a week for as long as needed. So, it's, it's, it's given us exciting data, and it's also allowing for conversations to happen, such as if there's a certain standard in one teacher's classroom that the students are doing really well, and, well, what, you know, Justin's having the conversations, what are you doing differently than the, the other teacher teaching the same subject area? And so, it allows for a lot of those collegiate conversations to happen at the Department Ed meetings, and I know Mike's doing the same thing with English.
Sure, there's actually been a pullout in some of the inclusion sections as well where we have co-teachers, so the humanities office, where I reside behind a wall of books and, and other barriers, is, is often used for, for that kind of pullout, so there's just, there's just many, many ways to go, to go about it. And, and it's interesting with the, the report that comes in, it, of course, shows every test the kid has taken in the district, which is really something. The, the first morning that I saw, saw that report, my, my eyes were bugging out of my head, it was really, really incredible, and again, we're, we're kind of new at it, so we're, we're figuring out how to work with it, and that's what we hope to do during the in-service days and other available time.
Thank you.
It actually helped Christina and I, too, because it's a computer-based test, so like Ms. Bernard said, some of the younger kids can't use the computer, while some of the high school kids can't either, and they're not able to use their accommodations, like the reader and different things like that, so we were able to see it before they were taking the MCAS. So, we were able to see it on the NUIA, and we met, and we're meeting with Mr. Murray next week to try to iron out those concerns now.
Right, you mean, like, the special kind of?
Just, yeah, special accommodations for their IP that are embedded into tests, and some of the kids, like, didn't know how to use it, and so, it helped us in that way.
There's a world of difference between two blank pages in front of you, oh, I should fill those two blank pages, and a scroll bar.
Right.
You, you know, I, many times, I, I, I typed it back in grad school, I typed something, typed, typed, wow, this thing must be really long, oh, no, it's only three and a half pages.
Thank you. Jeff?
First, two apologies. One, I'm really sorry it's so late on a weeknight. Secondly, but thank you very much for being here and to all of you who are still here. Secondly, I have to confess, your superintendent does not have a magic wand, at least he hasn't demonstrated it yet, and I have the displeasure of serving on the budget subcommittee, and what you may realize, having seen the budget presentation, is there's some pain coming, and I apologize for that as well. I, I am cautiously optimistic that your superintendent and you all have got some academic momentum, and I am really chagrin that it may be reduced by the, the fact that the budget is going to cause some, some pain, so my apologies for that. I, much to my surprise, I can tell you, I have a 20-year perspective on, on Wareham Public Schools. That has been an extraordinary two-decade period. I can tell you that I know, and Mr. Palladino knows, and maybe some of you also know, that I get a very distorted view of, of the average student at Wareham Public Schools.
We're going to, I've got two coming, don't worry.
Nevertheless, what I wanted to say more importantly was that I keep in contact, keep in contact with many of them, and I always ask them, when they're going through college and when they get finished with college, how do you, well-prepared do you think you were by Wareham Public Schools and the high school in particular? And without exception, they all say they were well-prepared, so congratulations for that. But unfortunately, I have a distorted view, but my point in saying that is, it's not, it's not that any of you, including the people of the middle school and the elementary school, I absolutely believe that you care deeply about what you're doing and the students and the children of Wareham. The only thing I would say is, and I, despite the fact that every kid has an opportunity to get a great education in Wareham Public Schools, some clearly are not taking advantage of it, and just as the elementary school talked about accountability of students, I think there also needs to be a little bit more accountability of faculty as well. That does not mean that the average teacher who is teaching our students isn't doing just fine, but we don't deal with averages, you deal with individuals in your roles as leaders in this, in this district. So, I encourage you to not only hold our students, but also our faculty accountable because it's critically important, not to the tennis team kids, who are probably going to do very well no matter what, but to, to the other 90%, whatever the number is, who really need sometimes a kick in the butt, et cetera, et cetera, I don't need to go on, it's late enough, but thank you all for being here.
Just want to assure you, we are keeping the teachers accountable, we do quite a great job, you heard from Kim, we're in 300 classrooms. The tough part is, sometimes we don't have teachers apply, and we're putting people in that we have to spend a lot of time coaching up, but I will assure you, and I think it's the same for all schools, we hold our teachers accountable, and we know what's going on in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we now have to vote to accept the strategic plan.
So moved.
Strategic and School Improvement Plan?
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0, and I'll ask members of the committee to sign this as well. Thank you.
Would we have to sign?
I guess that would approve.
Okay, next up, we have the superintendent report, bills and payroll warrants.
Okay, very quickly.
Should we have to sign something?
Yeah, it's coming.
Okay.
In my, in the superintendent's newsletter is a list of the payroll and bill warrants for your approval.
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? I see hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0-0.
Okay, and two wonderful gifts, $100 from Abby Glass for our DECA program, for the DECA calendar fundraiser, and $500 from the Massachusetts American Legion Headquarters to our JROTC program.
So moved.
Want to thank both groups, we have a motion to approve by April.
Seconded.
Seconded by Brennan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0.
That's all I have for this evening.
And we have agenda item number nine, April, do you have a suggestion for that?
So, yeah, so, as the Chair of the Policy Review Committee, and due to the time, I would like to make a motion to table the discussion on the policies and update from our last meeting to our December 21st meeting.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0, thank you. Any other business?
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Agreed, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, the meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn?
I knew that, oh, so close. Motion to adjourn?
I made it.
Brennan, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it was implied.
5-0-0.